I'd like to call this meeting of the Jeffrey Ridge Cooperative School Board to order. It is seven oh four P M. And I'd like for us all to stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is school board organization, and this is a time when the school board members here in front of you choose their board chair and then the vice chair after that. And so I'd like to entertain a motion for board chair.
I would like to make a motion for John McCarthy to be board chair.
There's a motion by Lisa for John McCarthy to be board chair. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Christine seconds it. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion passes seven zero zero. I am now going to turn the rest of the meeting over to John.
Okay, well, thank you. And I look forward to working with you all and hopefully hoping to facilitate this process over the coming year. So welcome to all our new board members. It's it's great to have you here. And thank you for you know, agreeing to do this and to put in the the time and the work. So we're grateful. Okay, so we have changes. Vice chair. Oh, yes, thank you. We need a vice chair. So do we have any nominations for a vice chair?
I would also like to nominate Charlie Ecker for vice chair.
I second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Charlie, thank you for serving again as vice chair. And next is changes to the agenda.
I have a change to the consent agenda. I would like to edit Kimberly Crichton's effective date to March twenty eighth.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So let's see. And if that's the only change to the consent agenda, then let's move on to public comments. And Nick?
Yeah, of course. So this is Communications Coordinator and School Board Secretary Nicholas Handy. If you wish to make a comment, you're free to do so whether in person or digitally. In person, just, you know, kind of wave your hand and I can acknowledge you. And then via remote, if you could just use your hand raise feature, it should be on your screen on the bottom half, just press that. And we can acknowledge you that way. In any case, please just make sure you read the public participation policy, which is up on the screen. And also, if you could just use your first name, last name, and town of residence before making a comment, please. So I guess we'll start with in person. Any public comments? All right, we'll give just a couple of seconds for remote. All right, I'm not seeing anybody at this time. We do have a second public comment section at the tail end of the meeting. So that's another opportunity for everybody.
Okay, thanks, Nick. And next we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, tonight, the agenda that I'll be talking about this evening during my report is as follows. We'll start off with a congratulations, a fun fact, a thank you, some default budget implications, and then it's kind of an update on some grants, partnerships, surveys, and committees. Destination Imagination is an organization dedicated to teaching participants the essential skills of creativity, teamwork, and problem solving. On March twelfth, our teams competed locally. And the results were as follows. You can see them up on the screen right there. RMS, second place, JRMS, third place. JGS had a couple of different teams that came in fifth place and fourth place. They all competed hard. They did their very best, and we are very proud of each and every individual who did this. And we've been doing DI for quite some time here. And our students do a marvelous job. Now, since they earned second place, the RMS, the I team, which is, their name is the Crafty Dragons, which is so cool, will have the opportunity to compete in the Destination Imagination Global Finals in Missouri this May. I'm sure there's some fundraising that goes along with that, but we're very excited for that. So we've had a good year of several accomplishments from our middle school and our high school teams and clubs, and we had robotics, and it's good to see some of our elementary teams and groups also making that same impact. Fun fact, baseball, softball, spring two thousand and two. For the first time in a while, and I believe since the two thousand and fifteen sixteen season for baseball, and maybe a little bit longer, we've gone back to the yearbooks, and we think it's been maybe eight years at this point in time. We have enough individuals participating in the high school level to field both a JV team and a varsity team for each for each group of individuals, so girls and boys. And we typically have a varsity team, but we've been able to kind of double our population in both those areas. So that's fantastic. I'm really excited about that. Going along with the two teams that we have for the middle school, we'll be fielding six baseball or softball teams. And the interesting part of that, and maybe it's something we'll discuss down the road relative to our facilities improvements, is that we do have limited field field space. So but it's exciting news, and it's a good problem to have. Well, Heather is going to be working on scheduling to figure out how we can get everyone to be able to play when they need to play and and to be able to have the necessary field space. But it's good to see that our programs are growing. Want to thank you to the Jeffrey and Ridge community for approving the following warrant articles, the teacher contract, the support staff contract, the HVAC project that's going to be taking place here at the middle and high school over a period of time, the next year, year and a half, funding the maintenance reserve fund and also the special ed reserve fund. Those were important to pass. We really appreciate everyone for the commitment to our schools and for coming out to vote. You know, what was neat was when I was collecting or going back and forth from Jeffrey and Ridge to see the tallies and so forth, was to see that our two communities, I think we had, and it may have been a small showing for our communities, but I think we still had around fourteen to fifteen hundred individuals voting here. And there were, you know, other areas that were passing or not passing their articles with far fewer people. So the commitment that our community has to that process is to be commended. So default budget implications, that's a topic I've emailed out to staff, to the community and so forth, that we'd start to talk about these issues. One article that did not pass was the proposed budget. There were varying reasons for that. I'm sure both towns decided that that was not a budget that they could support. And so we do have to operate with the default budget for next year, which is about five hundred forty thousand dollars less than the proposed operating budget. That is a little over half a million. However, when we look at a budget like that in the default budget, we also have to look at what other costs have changed or what other areas are changing as we project into the future, because any budget, for that matter, even if we passed the other budget, we may still have had to have considered, matter of fact, very likely, we would be considering making some cuts to that budget as well do, just so that we can operate within our budget. We're not allowed to over expend our budget. So we have to be, we have to work within the means that we have. And so this slide right here, this shows a little bit of the kind of some factual information about the electricity, for instance, propane, gasoline, biomass, trash. If you look at the default budget, you can see that's what we had budgeted in those lines. Then you can then, that's right in the middle. So the default budget is in the center. The proposed budget, which was turned down, was directly to the left or is directly to the left. And then anticipated is given some trends that have been occurring within pricing going up in fuel, electricity, propane, biomass, et cetera. What is likely to be needing to have enough money for in order to pay for what it would cost us to run next year? And so you can see that we're already about, you know, twenty, you know, maybe thirteen thousand fifty to fifteen thousand below in electricity, another fifty thousand to sixty thousand in propane, and so forth. You can do the math there. And when we look at what's anticipated for next year, and this is a conservative anticipation, it's not really following. It is, we are suggesting that things are going to level off here and there. You know, for instance, gasoline, we're think that hundred eighty thousand dollars and is really budgeted from four dollars per gallon. So if we get, for instance, a regular four dollars and thirty cents per gallon at the pump, that's going to result in a four dollar per gallon that we would spend. We don't pay certain taxes here in the district. So that's a very likely number. It could go a lot higher than that. But we do think that that's a safe number to consider as anticipated. The biomass, you know, at some point in time, with the HVAC work that we're doing, which part of that is to help develop our system here to be able to utilize the biomass more instead of propane, you will see that go down in the year or two to come, but because the work hasn't been done, it's going to take maybe till next November to get it all in completion. We won't have that savings until after that. So we see that there's about a quarter of a million that we also have to consider here. And then as of last week, after we made this chart here, we met with food service and they have provided us a contract for next year that is ninety thousand dollars higher than what they had previously budgeted. Unfortunately, that was not what we had within either of our, even our proposed budget. They were supposed to give us a proposal earlier on, although it probably would have been low, and it's, you know, it's difficult because they're experiencing the same fluctuations. Basically, that includes a twenty percent hike in salaries. So my hope is as we move forward with our food service, that the money that we spend, the contract that we go into, that that money does fully go to the workers, that those wages do go much higher. I want to make sure that, and we'll be checking up on this specific company to make sure that the employees who are working in our schools are getting paid appropriately for the significant increase that we will need to undergo here. It's important to note again that they raised that ninety thousand dollars. We're not permitted to over expend our budget. What people, what this, what the voters have said, this is what you're allowed to spend. And so we have to consider what that increase is going to do for us. How we're going to be able to handle that. So that's that's an addition to that two hundred fifty thousand that we have right there, in addition to the five hundred forty thousand. So these are real numbers. These are real situations. And I think that most people understand that we are in a time where prices are fluctuating and things are uncertain here and there. But we have to do our best to make sure that we're forecasting appropriately. So other implications. So on December thirteenth of this year, when we were in the middle of our budgets, well, a little toward the end of our budget conversations, we discussed what a default budget would mean or could be. And we knew that at that point in time, there were the possibility of cuts. There are slides that are still online that people can go back and refer to. I'm not going to put them up here tonight. Where we looked at class sizes, we did not propose cuts to elementary largely due to the high social emotional needs that were, as a result, really not just at our school district, but everywhere, but certainly impacting our school districts as well, that we felt another year of current staffing levels would be supportive of that, especially at the elementary school where several of the individuals kindergarten, first grade, some second graders, certainly preschoolers, had never actually been in for a full school year. And I won't go into that very deeply. I think we understand. We've talked about this before. It's our our schools are doing very well, but they are seeing more issues at the elementary level. And so we wanted to make sure that that would we'd be able to stabilize. So it was a goal to stabilize over the next year and a half. Now, our class sizes right now are, if you were to look at them on paper, are very good for elementary schools. So there we do have the ability to reduce in those areas, should that be something we decide we have to do and be able to stay within our or your policy on class size. I'm not here to promote that tonight. I will say that it is my my hope that as we move forward over the next couple of weeks with our decision making, that we'll find a way that even if we have to reduce staff, that we're able to find other avenues for our teachers or if it's administration or where to be able to continue with us. We realize that can't happen on every level all the time, but we want to do our best. And so as we move forward, we need to be thoughtful. For example, you know, if we did have any reductions that we felt we needed to make at that elementary level, we do know that we have changed a little bit to a co-teaching model for the first time. We're implementing that next year. We do have three open positions there. So we, that there's a possibility if people wanted to go that avenue, they could be transferred into those roles, and they would be the same type of teaching roles, except working with another individual at the same time. There may be possibilities of using Title I funds. It all depends on how what we have for carryover and what we get for an allocation next year. That one's a little bit harder to tell, but it's a possibility. We do, when we look at any sort of reductions, we look at attrition, so natural attrition, meaning if we have some some individuals who have retired, we look at, is that position something that we might be able to not continue and still be able to provide the educational experience that we need to provide? You know, most of our retirements this year happen in what I would consider to be kind of niche areas like music or art or STEM. But we have already been able to find some ways to provide some individuals kind of some transfers into those roles to be able to make sure that that we're staffed properly as well as they're taken care of as individuals too. So as we consider with the default implications, now we can continue to stay on that last slide for just a second, Nick. I apologize. My transition wasn't fantastic. When we look at that bottom paragraph about reductions, I take I take these this very seriously because really there are times to reduce and there's ways to reduce. And so we're going to be hearing tonight from the secondary administration about some of their ideas and concepts, and they'll talk about the whole process they've gone through and everything and and looking at how can they become even more efficient than what they are? And we know that over the years we have you know, aligned the middle school and high school together, and a lot of that has to do with efficiency and but there are things that can be done further. And at the same time, very likely maintaining, at the very least, or improving, given the opportunity to improve our situation. That's ideal. So if you, if that can be done simultaneously, then we're doing right for our kids. At the elementary level, that conversation, because of the two schools being separate by about ten to twelve minutes from one another, that's a harder conversation to have. We do have some guidelines that are already kind of written in how we do business with the cooperative agreement. And so we need to do some studying about what model would be best, you know, as we, what model, if we were to have to reduce in those areas, staffing, then what structures for an elementary school would be best for our kids to make sure that the adequate support is there for mental health and well-being, behavior? What's what structures are there for support of teachers, professional staff who and support staff who are working with our kids? How can we make systems that are better supportive, just by the nature of the structure of the school? How how school business is done? That's all very important. So as we have these conversations, you'll likely see that we're going to continue, as we talked about in December, looking into different types of models and having parents involved into those discussions and teachers involved in those discussions as we research what is best practice out there. Now we go to the default recommendation on the next slide. And so I've shown you between eight hundred thousand and nine hundred thousand, depending which number you're looking at. If you include that food service in there, it's closer to the eight fifty to nine hundred thousand dollars. Will need, will need to be accounted for. And so I have a recommendation that the school board provide a finance committee who has really the most experience looking at all these budget lines. In collaboration with building and district administration, the building administrators know exactly what it is their staff is looking for, what their needs are. They can get feedback from their staff as to what their spending needs are around supplies and software and things of that nature. What you know, can they likely do without? What can they not do without? District administration, of course, because I'd be part of the committee anyway and carry as the finance individual for the district. So we would need her support with the responsibility of delving further into the budget to look for and identify ways that do not involve large-scale personnel cuts. Large-scale personnel cuts. So there may need to be personnel cuts. We've known that, that I've said in the paper, when they've contacted me for months now. If we were to have that default budget, default budget is is here, and those possibilities are still real. But there is also, there are also possibilities to minimize that. And that's what I think we need to do collaboratively to see what we can do to minimize those areas. The final approach, I would say, I say the word needs, this is my opinion, needs to take into consideration the challenges that the last two years have brought with it, with them academically and socially, emotionally. Our school district has done an extraordinarily good job this year. It has not always been easy. I will say again, that I am extraordinarily proud of our staff, both support staff and our teachers who have done over this time of COVID. I could not have asked for our I could not have times up. I could not have asked for a harder working group of individuals, a more committed group of individuals than who we have here in the Jeffrey Ridge Cooperative School District. There could, there to be commended. Going to that last slide, partnerships, grants, and committees. Just, I've talked a little bit about the partnership work that we're trying to do mostly with the elementary school with Franklin Pierce University. That partnership, though I cannot go very deeply with it right now, we still have to work on memorandum of agreements, structures. We have a lot of reporting out to do to schools and feedback from schools that we need. But we're continuing to meet and to organize. The idea of this partnership is to have a multi a multi-layered, I suppose, internship approach to supporting our school district as well as to us supporting their university in the area of teacher education. It's the group we I met today from ten to twelve to kind of continue our next steps. I'll be meeting again next Monday as well. Some of our principals will be meeting with that. I have special education meeting with them. And though it's a partnership again, that would kind of be for the entire district and would have traces of support for the middle school, high school. It is by and large an elementary school partnership. And so you'll continue to hear more in the month to month and a half to come. The survey went out, a survey went out this past week, I think it was on Friday, asking families to comment as to needs that their children are having this year, both socially, emotionally, and academically. We have grant funds from the federal government, S R three. These funds are by, like this coupled with the S R two funds are what is entirely funding our HVAC work at the elementary schools and for one part of this middle school. And then we have twenty percent that we are that we have to set aside for the purpose of learning loss, skills loss, social emotional stresses, anything caused or linked to the pandemic. And so there are some areas that we can look at. About fifty to fifty-five parents so far have responded to that. A similar survey went out in a month and a half or so ago to our staff internally. I haven't looked at and compared the data yet, as I'm leaving this open for a couple more days. But there are, there are some, just like looking at the graphs, you can see that there's some there are some areas that we all agree on should be should be looked at. I think the area of independent learning is a concern to parents as well as it is to our staff here. The idea of being able to work on your own and take a risk and be okay with not getting it right and to continue to work on that rather than kind of shutting down. I think that is something that we're seeing. And so can we use funds to help with that? What would that look like? Could it be that there might be some behavioral issues at our younger grade levels? And so because students haven't been in schools, they haven't been socialized in the same way. Do we help support early, our early childhood in a bigger way for a couple of years to just get a, get a good boost? Those are ideas that we can use it for. It is not, these funds are not something we can utilize to reduce class size with. That's not what this is about. Like, for instance, oh, we passed a default budget, so we have to remove teachers, and then we're going to take S R funds and refill that. That's more supplanting, you know, than than using it for the appropriate purposes of what it is for. Committees. So I've already talked about the fact that we're going to be putting together a committee to look at school structures and to do some research on that. Teacher support and evaluation. I do have, we need to look at that again. I have some administrators. I have some teachers. I have at least one school board member who is interested in continuing on with that and looking at that over the next couple of months. So that will be determined soon as to the timeframe we meet. The Building Improvements Committee, we meet tomorrow night at five thirty P M. This is open to anyone who is interested in looking at our facilities and learning kind of what we've been through with our architects, with with the companies that we're using for our HVAC, with ideas that have been expressed in the wellness committee on space needed with with some survey information that our students and our staff have also said we're we're lacking in some areas. And then just because we have aging facilities, we have to take, you know, some some areas into consideration with that. And so you're getting kind of like a think group together saying, all right, yeah, yeah, we should, we should take a look at these areas and figure out what we need to be doing. And then the RMS principal search is going on. We've, the committee has met a couple of times. Interviews are set up for Thursday and Friday of this week. And so those will be the first round, and we'll go from after that. We hope to have a set of finalists by early April. That's my report for tonight. If there are any questions, I will take those, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes, absolutely. Does anybody have any questions about the many things that we've gone through here? Yes, absolutely. Does anybody have any questions about the many things that Ruben's gone through here?
Okay, Christine, Christine has a question.
Hi Christine.
Well, first, I'd like to start out by saying congratulations to D I. Sorry, my kids were involved in that and I know what incredible work it is. So that's a super success. I'm very proud of our learners. And this isn't so much a question, but I just want to reiterate something that, that Ruben said. You know, our staff has been through so much and it was a couple of years ago, literally two years ago when the school shut down and. Our teachers were, all the teachers were heroes, right? They're frontline workers. They were heroes. And now the budget has come in and people are asking us to see if we can reduce. Some positions to save money. And I just. I just wanted to say there that I still see our teachers as our heroes and to, to say this, you know, here. We're asking our teachers to look and say, what can we reduce? While still performing our best and to keep kids first, it just, it's pretty astounding to me. So I want to thank our administration and our teachers for just continuing to outperform any expectations.
Well said, Christine.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay. If there are no more questions. For Ruben then. Or comments. Then we'll move on to our. Our consent agenda, which is the next item. Are there any changes to the consent agenda other than the one change that we've talked about?
The meeting minutes.
No, but I have a. Question. And that is. After the field trip is done for the physics group. Could I see what kind of problems they addressed and what, what measurement tools they had? Cause I find it unique that there's, there's so much opportunity there. I'm just wondering, you know, how they're going to measure mass and, and force and all of these things that just. So if I could get some feedback on what, what it is that they're learning, that'd be great.
It might be something that we can highlight in, you know, the education committee too.
Okay, good.
I also have a question about the field trip, not that specific one, but it's. My understanding that the field trip that was voted on at the last school board meeting has been canceled because of the lack of funds for transportation.
Would it be okay if David speaks?
Thank you, David.
So I'll just speak really loudly. The bus thing became a problem because of the distance for the trips. So the bus company would have required sending two drivers for the trip and they were unable to secure that. So we had to then look at a driver bus and the cost for that was exorbitant for the day, not something I was comfortable with, given the number of learners. So we're going to try something different. I didn't feel it was appropriate to basically take a coach bus for that sort of like. The funding is there, it just didn't seem like it was appropriate to spend that amount of funding for this particular short, you know, two hour tour or something.
And that won't be an issue for these field trips coming up because they won't be. It won't require that type of bus.
I believe that is the case, yes. Yep. So given what we have for the requisition so far, the Quebec trip is, is privately sort of done anyways. That one should be all set. And the Six Flags trip is an annual trip that they do. It's either there or Canterbury Lake typically. And so we should be able to secure the bus for that. And yes, we will make a note to get a report back to Vice Chair Iker.
David, what, what was the reason for the second driver?
So the cave that they were going to explore is about three and a half hours one way. So when you add on the two hours for the tour and then the three and a half hours back, the bus company has a policy with that amount of time to have a second driver.
Okay, so once they go over eight hours, is that how it works?
I'm not, I think it might be driving time. I'm not a hundred percent sure because we've done other field trips where the driving time is shorter. Even though the total trip is, is of that length, I think it's the seven hours of driving time that's the concern.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so before we address the consent agenda, I think we need to remove the meeting minutes since we have three new board members. But will not have been here for the. For the last meeting, so. Need an ocean? Yes, please. I'd like to remove the meeting minutes of March seven, public and non-public and non-public two.
No second.
Okay, all in favor? Like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended. Hey, we have a second.
All second.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Thank you, Charlie. All, all in favor? And you know, I should have asked if there were. Comments or.
Yeah, I had a question on.
But we'll.
What is it we're, we're trying to do on that spot?
Okay, so on item number five, the consent agenda. These are things that we generally group having to do with business housekeeping. And rather than making the meeting longer by going through each one and have a discussion. We try to provide the information before the meeting so that, you know, there's an opportunity to look at the, at the items.
Thank you.
Thank you. Try to ask next time. All right. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of March seven, public, non-public and non-public number two.
No second.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Lisa. All in favor? And. So.
The pass, it could passes, I think it's four, right?
Anytime that you're not at a meeting, you don't vote yes or no, you just abstain. So you have an option to vote yes, no, or to abstain. Abstaining just means you're not taking an official though. And just when you're not at a meeting officially, you just don't vote to. So in the future, as you're going through, if you miss a meeting, you just wouldn't vote on those meeting minutes.
Right, perfect. Again.
Thanks.
Try, try and keep within the general rules of. So general rules of waters. So the boat was four zero three, it was four, four zero and three extension for passengers. Okay, good. And now we're on to. Okay, okay, now we're on to our presentations. And for that purpose, we'd like to thank. Tim and Heather and David for being here tonight. Oh, and Rachel, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for the time tonight. We're going to go through a pretty lengthy, unfortunately, but hopefully lots of information. Proposal and presentation to the board addressing some of the impacts of a potential default budget. And sort of getting in front of trying to support efficiency to make those cuts that might affect the middle high school happen in a way that doesn't. Effect learning for the learners to the extent possible. So we'll take some turns going through stuff, but I'll, you know, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. I'm, I'm David Dustin of the principal. I think I know everyone else on the board. And I have my administrative team here tonight, so I'll just pass the mic down and give them a chance to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Rachel Summy Leonard. I'm the assistant principal. I work with student safety and support.
Heather Shulman, assistant principal of teaching and learning.
And Kim Baker, director of counseling.
So we'll chunk the presentation up so you're not just hearing my voice the whole time and get some more specific information from the folks who are directly managing some of the areas of this. So we're coming forward, first and foremost, a little bit of context, I guess, that I feel needs to be said just to couch. What we looked at when thinking about the schedule for next year. And I think the first thing, you know, is that we've made a lot of progress over the last several years. And especially over the last year or two, as we've worked with our teachers and staff. So we can just go two slides into the future here. You know, if you've read the bird's nests at all, I try to list some of these accomplishments and I know that our teachers are submitting some of the things that they're doing. But I kind of lumped into four areas, some of the things that we've really been proud of with the work we've done this year that we want to make sure we continue. We've had a lot of improvements to our school climate and culture this year, particularly having all of our learners back in the building and focusing on some social emotional pieces already. We've seen our behavior referrals, which spiked at the beginning of the year and in a lot of school districts are still spiking. Our stabilized somewhere around October and had a pretty steep decline and have now reached basically normal levels. We continue to have normal behaviors that you see in a school. Profanity from time to time, learners being disruptive in classes, those things happen. But they're at levels now that would have been pre-COVID levels that we can now continue to address as we go forward. We've done some work to introduce some new direct instruction in our classrooms under the direction of counseling. And we've seen, as Ruben pointed out earlier, pretty substantial growth in our activities this year with learners after school choosing to stay for a variety of reasons. Sometimes I've had to shepherd learners into clubs or activities because I see them in the halls hanging out after school and we can't just have them unsupervised. So we just have a lot of interest with our learners to be in the building, which is a good sign of positive culture and climate as well. This year, we focused a lot of time on collaborative foundations with our staff. All of our teams have a dedicated team time and we focused a lot of that time on building what we call professional learning communities in place. This year, we're just focusing on foundations and we've given a lot of information to the education committee focused around that. We've had outcomes across the board, even in this early stage of doing professional learning communities. And we're now up to actually seven teams as a result of this foundation. Who are wanting full immersion in the district approved learning management system next year, which is Otis. And a full immersion in what's called a standard based grading system, which aligns with this board's I policies and things like that. Much earlier than we would have been anticipating. That's because of the collaborative foundation they have together. Our learners are growing academically this year in ways that we probably wouldn't have anticipated. But our teachers have dedicated their time and effort to make sure that happens. We did false testing of map testing and PSATs across the board. And in the winter time in January, did the New Hampshire State Assessment System tests for the mid-year. And our middle school test scores showed substantial improvement at that January mark, even from where they were two years ago because of the efforts of our staff. That's a big deal and we're really proud of the work that they've been doing. And our Wellness Academic Center has been growing with learners taking advantage of that to boost work habits and keep up with their academics. And our staff culture this year has improved notably from even where it was, I would say, three to four years ago. We have more staff advising and coaching this year than we've had in prior years. And we've introduced some staff driven initiatives, one of which is called our staff shout out system, which has been tried in this building in years past. The last time, five years ago. And I bring that up because when you have a system like this and a culture that isn't healthy and ready for it, it doesn't get taken advantage of. This year, we're having dozens of teachers taking time out of their day to recognize the things others are doing. Come down to the teacher's room, write notes and make sure that others hear about the great stuff their colleagues are doing with specific details. These things are just examples of what has been improvements in our staff culture. So these are good things that I think we need to continue to focus on. Yeah, really proud of our staff. Ruben sort of took the thunder on that, but we have an amazing staff that is feeling a little bit. Caught off guard by the budget situation, which is understandable, but as I assured them and reinforced with them. That is not a reflection of them. That's a reflection of other needs that we need to take advantage of and look for. But our staff are amazing and they do amazing work with our, our wonderful kids. And we have challenges. Don't take the last couple of slides to me that I think our school is perfect. I know it's not. We have things we need to continue to work on. We have more work to do on social emotional well being. We're seeing a lot of peer conflict situations. Thankfully, they're not rising to the physical level like they are in some other areas. But we are still seeing that as a challenge that needs to be worked on. I'm using the phrase resocializing learners because some of our learners, especially in the middle school, our seventh graders, for example. Some of them hadn't been in person full time since back in elementary school. And we're seeing behaviors that reflect that level of social development. So a lot of effort needs to continue to go into that resocialization piece. While we have a foundation for staff collaboration this year, next year, we need to have the resources and time to build systems. So staff can continue to pull data and be even more intentional in that work. Our academics always, we want to continue working on those. In particular, reading and writing is a focus area that we know we need to continue to grow as well as math. Particularly how to transfer math knowledge into real applications. And then future planning with our learners. This year, we introduced the freshman foundations program where learners were developing personal learning plans in ninth grade. Next year, the goal is to continue that work and focus on more concrete and specific career and college pathways for learners. Essentially, what we're presenting is our attempt and our suggestion on how we can capitalize on the strengths we've been doing. Address the challenges I just mentioned, while hopefully building in some of that efficiency that Ruben was talking about going forward. So we really discussed together with our team leaders and with our staff. Four priority areas that we have to make sure we think about if we look to reduce any positions going forward. We always talk about programming as being something that we would like to not disrupt. And when we say programming, we mean things like art programs, advanced placement courses, those things that fall on the outside of that mandatory core. We would like to just minimize how the disruption to that might take place. Those are things that learners count on. Those are things that develop the brain fully. Those are things that bring some of our learners into the building who otherwise may not be here. We need to minimize the disruption to our teachers who have had a very tumultuous few years. We need to think about things like how many preps they're being asked to teach. A prep means a different type of class. And if our teachers are being asked to teach four, five, six different preps. That diminishes their ability to focus and make sure that the learning is that's taking places of the highest quality. We need to avoid class size increases, especially in the middle school. Our middle school core classes are averaging in the mid twenties range already. Any reductions there would push those numbers up to the board's limit, most likely, you know, across the board. And as Ruben mentioned earlier, we have to maintain that scheduling alignment between the middle and high school, which has created both opportunities for learners, but also efficiency in how we use our resources. Just a little bit of context, over the last few years, the middle high school has done a lot of work to try to build efficiency. As budgets have continued to, to be looked at year over year, we used to have two librarians in this building. We are now have one. We used to have two principals in this building. We now have one. We had two health teachers. We now have one. You get the pattern, okay? My point with this, and there's another slide just talking about, which we can jump too quickly, some shifts that we've made that weren't eliminations. And I'm sure I'm missing some. The point is, we've kind of been squeezing the middle high school over the, the last several years intentionally. And with results that have supported more efficient learning for, for the learners without losing access to those priorities I talked. But we're kind of getting close to what I would consider to be the bottom line where we start to lose some of the programming and lose access to learners. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Baker, the counseling director.
So I'm just going to talk a little bit about what schedule looks like now and what the schedule would look like moving forward. Based on some changes that we're going to propose later on in the presentation, also thinking about the priorities that David just talked about. So currently we have a seven period day. Out of the seven periods, all of our teachers teach five periods. They also have a prep time and a team time to equal the seven. In an eight period, so in a seven period day, if we look at most departments have four teachers. And I'll use English as an example, four English teachers times five gives us twenty English sections. Available for learners, available for us to schedule to offer courses. So what we did is we looked at how do we, given the fact that we may need to make cuts. How do we make sure that we still make those courses, those programs available to our learners? So we looked at the impact of an eight period day. So under an eight period day, teachers would teach six sections, still maintaining that prep and that team time. So that forty-five minute about time period for prep and forty-five minutes for team time. In a department that has four teachers, that gives us twenty-four sections. So in a department where there are no cuts, that we'd actually gain four sections that teachers could teach. If we look at reduction in a seven period day and we go from four teachers in a department to three. That means that only fifteen sections would be available, so we would be cutting five classes. And teachers would still have that forty-five minute prep and that forty-five minute team time and eight. In an eight-period day with a reduction in staff, going from four teachers to three, we go from that 24 to 18, still maintaining that prep and team time for teachers. So the reduction is two sections, so it has less impact on our learners. So in some places, we gain sections, and other places where we may need to make cuts, we are losing some sections. So this is a simple way to kind of look at it for now. We'll actually show you some sample schedules later on in the presentation.
So, yep.
So what I'm looking at here is, can you go back again? What I'm looking at here is over on the right, it says that if I'm going to go from seven periods and I'm going to reduce one position, that the closest I can get to 20 sections is 18 sections by going to eight periods. That's what I'm looking at.
Correct. Yeah.
Is the seven-periods current?
Yes.
And eight-period is proposed?
Kind of. Let's jump to the next slide, and that will answer your question. So we, the point of this is really to show that we have to increase the instructional periods if we're going to try to maintain programming. That's appropriate to do for the middle school. Our middle school teachers, we've met with both the team leads and with the whole staff. The change for them going from seven to eight periods is pretty minimal. What it does for them is it spreads out their learners over six sections and actually lowers their class sizes and allows for some flexibility to be built in, which the middle school was pretty excited about. The high school, an eight-period day is not going to work. A seven-period day is already kind of rough for the high school. So when you're looking at an eight-period system in a high school, you're typically talking about a block schedule sort of format. And that's what we're proposing today is a middle school schedule that's eight periods and a high school schedule that's a block. And how that works to keep times aligned is essentially every two periods of an eight-period day becomes one block in the high school. Our middle school, we would put our core classes next to each other based on discipline. So science and math, period one and two, for example. So we would share the same learners for the period one, two timeframe, myself, let's say I'm a math teacher, and let's say that Lisa's a science teacher, we would share 50 learners between us for 90 minutes, and we would be able to group and regroup them however we would like. Okay, so we would do that, you know, three times throughout the course of the day.
Co-teaching or?
Kind of. We could keep a separation. Lisa and I could say, you know what, we're not quite ready yet for that co-teaching model. So we could keep 43 minutes each, and then we swap our learners around. Or some of our teachers have already asked, can we just use the time together how we'd like? Great, you know, you can co-teach that way. So there's some flexibility there that the middle school has been asking for with interdisciplinary work and with some of that co-teaching possibility. The high school, most of our courses would shift to a four-by-four block, which means four courses in the fall, four courses in the spring. Some of them might be 45 minutes, some might be quarters, quarter of the year long, et cetera. And we'll talk more about that in the next couple of slides.
And the teachers and students have kind of seen these and?
So right now, we have met with the whole staff and talked through many of these pieces. I've also met with the student council in the high school and gotten some feedback. Most of them were very excited. There was a couple of learners who followed up with me with some additional questions. If the board moves forward with this, our next step would be meeting with the classes throughout the high school to talk about the change with them and hear questions out. The change to the middle school is pretty minimal, so I wouldn't want to necessarily go to them and say, hey, we're shaving a few minutes off of your periods. That doesn't really affect their lives that much. So on the middle school side, there are some positives to this. Again, spreading the learners out is a pretty big one, a pretty large one, spreading them from six, five sections to six. That lowers their class sizes in a way that helps them quite a bit. Again, some of our science teachers, in particular, who have a cap of 24, are seeing all of their sections capped out in the middle school. Our other classes that have the cap of 30, some of their sections are already pushing that cap. So this would allow us to bring all those numbers back down into the low 20s, which is great. It provides that opportunity for co-teaching or interdisciplinary learning more easily. Doesn't really disrupt the middle school's schedule all that much. And I put it on the pro side, we would find other ways to provide support besides the current office hours model, which is not working out great. There are some logistical challenges for counseling, which is not so great, and a couple of minute loss of instructional time, which is on the cons list. For the high school, it's a little bit more evenly divided because it's a pretty big change. So starting with the pros, for the teachers, they would have less preps at the same time because you go from teaching all five courses to teaching three at a time. The learners would have less classes at the same time. Instead of having seven, they would drop down to having four. So there's a benefit there. Teachers, instead of seeing, in some cases, up to 130 learners all at once, would drop down to roughly half that number in a semester. With appropriate support, the longer periods can allow for more enrichment and depth of content, especially in our lab-based classes, which is another positive. This schedule would be a much closer alignment to our CTE partners at ConVale who use a block schedule. This year, we've also sent a few learners to the Cheshire Career Center in Keene for courses not offered at ConVale. So that would allow for that partnership to also continue. We would also be able to help learners who might not be doing great in the class as we get closer to the end of November. There's always a small handful of learners who you say, you know what, at this point, it might be better to start over because something didn't click early on in the course. With the seven-period day, they have to take that course for the remainder of the year, and we do whatever we can to support them. But it provides an opportunity for a learner who has a rough start, especially in ninth grade, to maybe take that course again immediately in the spring and not fall behind. And of course, less transitions in the day is always helpful, and Rachel will talk about that in a little while.
So the block scheduling though, that would make it so instead of taking math all year, you'd be taking that for one half of the year, correct?
It depends on the course. We're looking at algebra and geometry, which are foundational math courses, being what are called skinnies. So those would go for 45 minutes all year still and be paired opposite other skinny courses like that. Not necessarily with ELA, because in the high school, you can take an ELA course, let's say, English nine, and have that one semester and pair that opposite world history, for example, which uses a lot of the same skills the next semester.
Are we worried about if you were to, you were to be doing this every other, so they're only taking it for half the year? Are we worried that maybe these children aren't going to take another course for a full year for the most part? Because they wouldn't take it in the first semester, next year they would take it in the second, then there's a lot of loss in that entire year off.
We'll talk about that a little bit later on in more detail. The short answer is that the research on block schedule versus a seven-period or eight-period schedule is that the schedule itself doesn't have that much of an impact on learning. If teachers, which our teachers would be doing, use the correct instructional strategies, the durability of learning should last longer than that window of time anyways, and learners will continue to use those skills and other like courses in similar disciplines. So the example, again, the easiest example is that social studies and English discipline. Even if a learner doesn't have another English course until the following, you know, two semesters later, they shouldn't at some point have a social studies class that uses those same reading and writing skills. So cons, again, we kind of talked about just now, the schedule gaps between disciplines. We'd have to make sure that that's moderated with careful scheduling. And the change in instructional model and schedule is a big change for our teachers and for our learners. We did this last year with an AB block to accommodate COVID, but this is different. This is more of an intentional, continuous sort of approach like this.
So I'm just going to show you the actual schedule we're proposing on the next slide. So this shows you the blocks and the periods. So block one, all blocks would be about 88 minutes, yes. This is middle and high school kind of combined. Yeah, you'll see. So you'll see the block and the time of the block, which is 88 minutes. And then below, you'll see period one and period two, that would be the middle school, or any skinnies being run at the high school. And I'm going to show you some sample student schedules, which might make it a little bit easier to read. But what you'll see here is that the blocks are 88 minutes, the periods are 43 minutes with about a two-minute passing time in between. What is really nice about this schedule is right now, our middle and high school schedule are not the same until period four. And so sharing staff, sharing resources, all that can be a challenge, and that is a challenge in and of itself when building a master schedule. So this helps us align everything. So block one equals period one and two. There's passing from block to block. This adds a 15-minute mentoring time every day. So I know we talked about moving away from the office hours and bringing those supports into the block or into the period. But the designated mentoring time, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a few minutes, really is about building relationships and grounding and checking in and making sure learners have what they need. And so that's a 15-minute period every day for our learners. And then we have period two, which would, block two, which would be period three and four for middle school. So same thing, 88 minutes for the block and 43 for the period.
So the 88 minutes is a student, a high school student would have 88 minutes of history?
Could, yes, could, yes. Period, block three and period five and six for the middle school is the lunch block, so that gets a little more complicated. We will continue to have two lunches at the high school, but this does provide us with some flexibility on how and when we do lunches. And so there'll be three options, and so if we move forward with this schedule, we'll work with learners and staff to determine what our lunch schedule will look like. But this just shows you what period, what block three looks like because it is a longer period of time because of that 25-minute lunch period. And then if we go to the next slide, you'll see for our seventh and eighth graders, that's period five and period six. So you can see that the lunch is built in. It's very similar to what they have now for lunch. It's a little bit later, starts a few minutes later, but essentially very similar to what they're doing now. Period, for grade six, period five will be an RTI block, so they'll have lunch. And then they'll have some time with their teachers. And this is really to support the transition. It's a big transition from fifth to sixth grade. So making sure we're building that in academically, socially, emotionally, working with those teachers. School counselors will be in the classroom supporting that work, and so they'll spend that time with their teachers every single day. And then period six is there for grade six also. And then the last block of the day, block four, which equals period seven and eight for the middle school. And I know this is a lot, and I think the easiest thing is to look at sample schedules, which we have on the next slide. So this is a sample sixth-grade teacher's schedule, which really is very similar to what they're doing now. The addition to their schedule for the, because they'll have six periods versus five periods, is that RTI support block. And so that's something that we definitely saw would be helpful this year. They're using office hours, but it's not a very long block. It's not consistent based on other things they have going on in the classroom. And so this would allow all teachers to work with learners in that support block. And what it looks like for the learners is on the next slide. So this would be a sample sixth-grade learner's schedule. So you can see that they'd have their traditional academics, reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. You see the RTI block, and then this allows them to have wellness all year. We've talked about the need for movement. We saw that a lot with our sixth graders. That health and wellness piece, moving around, being active, being outside. So right now, that is just a course that's offered for half the year, so we're extending that. And then this would still allow them to have that art and music in the STEM class. So it adds to their day and provides some built-in support. And I didn't do a grade seven schedule, but I did a grade eight. Grade seven would be similar to grade eight. And this looks a little different. We did this as like a block, which is because of David referenced earlier, that interdisciplinary learning and working together. So for example, English and social studies classes would be scheduled at the same time. So math and science could be scheduled at the same time. And then the teachers could decide, some days they may work with them for 45 minutes. Sometimes they might team teach together for the 88 minutes. Other times, I may say as an English teacher, hey, I'm going to take, you know, 25 of the learners today for the whole block. You take the other 25 and then we switch. So it's much more collaborative, gives an opportunity for those teachers in those subject areas to collaborate and communicate and work together. And there was a lot of excitement around that in all of these teacher's schedules. You also see that their team time and prep are together, they're married together. So this also provides a lot of flexibility. So right now, it's 45 minutes and 45 minutes, and team time is at the same time, but preps are all over in different places in their schedules. So this would allow a team on some days to work together for the 88 minutes. And maybe the next day, they do their prep for 88 minutes or split it out 45 and 45. But it gives a lot more flexibility with the work and time they can spend together as a department, as teams. And then this is a sample eighth-grade schedule. So for periods one and two, they'd have English and social studies. Periods three and four, math and science. Period three would be the world language. For second semester, they might have wellness and STEM for just the skinny periods. And this is all just examples. There'll be lots of different ways to put a schedule together. Music would be all year in the skinny format for our middle school and our high school students. So chorus would be all year, period seven and band, period eight. This actually adds more options for our learners because they're picking up an extra period in their schedule. So, you know, sometimes we found, especially if students have other courses built in, like academic supports, things like that in their day, they're not able to have access to as many UAs or elective courses, so this provides that opportunity. And then we look at the high school's schedule. So this is a sample teacher's schedule, and this gets a little more complicated because there's many more format, different ways that courses can be offered in the high school schedule. So this shows you that English 11 is offered as a semester. So there are four separate English classes, so every day 88 minutes for a semester. The AP English is for three quarters, so quarter one, quarter two, quarter three. And students who take an AP course would then earn one and a half credits for that class, and it still provides them with the opportunity to take another quarter class. For this teacher, they'd be teaching another senior English class for that period of time. But for a senior, and we can look at, or for another high school junior, we can look at their schedule. This may be an opportunity for them, if this was a schedule that they were taking, they might take that psychology class or that digital photography class or something like that opposite that AP course. So this could be a sample high school schedule. One of the things that's happened sometimes with a seven-period day, what we notice is you have learners that are maybe interested in science, or they're interested in art, or they're interested in math. But you can't double up. You can't take more than one class because either it doesn't fit into the schedule, given all the other requirements, or even those prerequisites, like you have to have this math class before this next math class, or you have to have Algebra II before Chemistry. So in the block scheduling, it allows our learners who have a particular interest or strength to double up and take those courses. So this high school student actually is taking two science classes, anatomy and physiology, first semester and chemistry, second semester.
So what would that do to the students that take like the, like the building trades, stuff like that? Those are modern classes.
Yeah, so right now, the building trades courses are actually double periods, so they're already being offered in a block. And all of the courses that our students take at ConVale or in Keene are also offered in the block. So, yeah, that's a really good question. So construction trades could be in period, it could be in block one, block two, block three, or block four.
And the purpose for this schedule change is budget? Is that what we said?
Yeah, it's to, it is, because what we, if we are staying in a seven-period day and we cut a teacher, I don't think there's any way to do that without cutting programs. Losing five sections of, from a particular department, like losing five English sections and still keeping to that 28 to 30 learners in a class, because some of our classes are already at that size, would be really tough. So we'd have to look at cuts from other places like it's programming.
The only reason I was asking is it seems like these kids, probably freshmen, sophomores, maybe even juniors, their schedules are changed every year, like they've gone through a lot of schedule changes.
Yeah, and it was, yeah.
Yeah, I don't disagree at all about that. It's part of the reason why this year, even though we switched schedules last year to the AB block, we went back to the exact schedule from the year before. This scheduling model that we're proposing is something we may have discussed and done down the road because there are a lot of benefits, which we're kind of talking about. I think the budget situation now has sped up the conversation a lot faster than it probably would have been. But I think one of the things to consider as the board is considering our proposal is that I would not, I, as the principal, would not come forward with another schedule change unless you told me I had to for as long as we could from this point on. Because, you know, the current learners now have a second year, non-consecutively of the same schedule, but that's, it's been a lot of change.
Also mentioned, when we did talk to the learners, though, they did mention that you had some type of block scheduling, was it last year? And every other day, so they had some reference, and they reminded that they've had some exposure to this type of schedule.
Did the 88-minute classes make the high schoolers? Okay.
I wasn't here last year, so I have to.
So.
So I know a lot last, like a lot of the kids were like, that is a long time.
So the feedback that we've gotten so far, and again, I've only met with the student council because it's hard to get feedback from all learners at the same time. The feedback that I have gotten from the student council, which had all the grade levels, there was, I think probably 15 learners in attendance. Couple of seniors, it was interesting. They, they were saying things like, we should have been doing this the last four years. Okay, great. Uh, but a lot of the sophomores and freshmen and a few of the juniors who were there, their feedback was generally positive. You know, the, the sample schedule that Ms. Baker is showing here relates to a specific learner who said, ooh, so you mean I could take, you know, my geometry class and my algebra two class in the same year, possibly. And another learner, oh, so this means I could take more than one science. So they were starting to see some of the potential. The question of the 88 minutes, obviously a learner sitting there is saying, if I don't like a class, that's tough, 88 minutes. But that's where a lot of the support that we're, that Heather's going to talk about, Mrs. Schum. Teachers are going to have to teach differently with a block to be successful. And I think last year was a tough example because we had no prep for that. It was, oh my gosh, we better lower our numbers below this threshold now, you know, let's make it happen quickly. So I think that that's a critical piece of the support and training that our staff are going to need to make sure that time is being used efficiently with the learners.
Any questions about any of the schedules or samples or, you know, it's a lot.
Is there going to be curriculum for that? Is that just?
With the sixth graders?
Yeah.
Though, yeah, we'll work on that. That's part of what the teachers, the sixth grade teams will work together. Um, and school counseling too, because there'll be a social emotional component. We've been in the classroom. Some this year, I think we really want to push in as a school counseling team into that class and not into that grade level, especially around the transition. And I think we're using up class time. So this provides us an opportunity to work with the teachers and the learners. So. We can go to the next slide. So I think we've talked about this, but just to highlight, and I think this may answer some of the questions you also had. So most of the classes at Conant will be semester full credit courses, like the English 11 that we, we spoke about, the human anatomy, the chemistry, and those are examples of those classes. But we also recognize especially, I think that transition for eighth to ninth grade, and even some of the classes into 10th grade is building that foundation, like the math, you brought up the math piece. So there's been some conversation about algebra one being in a period format. So we called, I call that a skinny. So that 45 minute period, 43 minute all year. We also talked about that with world language. We recognize the importance with our music programs, band and chorus. We don't want just concerts in the, in the fall. We want them throughout the year. And so making sure that we pay attention to those courses. And if the schedule is approved, then we'll continue to work with our, with our teachers and our learners to identify other courses that we may need to consider offering in the skinny and that period format at the high school level. Um, I showed you a sample of the AP courses. AP, our AP students take the AP exam in May. So being in class from the beginning of school year up until that time of that exam is really important. But the, the nice thing about that is they then get to choose another elective. Or if they're a junior or senior, they can have their junior or senior block during that time. So it provides some flexibility there. Most of our electives will be those one, those quarters, so quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, quarter four classes. So learners can, um, you know, put two of those together or mix those with junior or senior block for our upperclassmen. So it provides a lot of flexibility with the schedule. Next slide. So this just talks a little bit about the 15 minute mentoring versus the office hours. You know, really it kind of speaks to the slides and the conversation that Mr. Dustin had earlier about helping our learners feel connected and helping our teachers feel connected to our learners and building those positive relationships and being, and working together for, building those relationships over the four years. I know that as a district, we've spent a lot of time, um, you know, talking about the MTSSB, bringing that into our schools. Um, and that really looks at that tiered system of support. And really to start, um, we focus on that universal programming. And so it kind of speaks to what we talked about with the RTI is bringing in more of that social emotional learning programming. We've done some of that this year. We really want to do more. Right now the mentoring time is only once a week. And it's not enough time. We want to be able to see our learners every day and make those connections. It helps support personalized learning through, um, through college and career readiness programming. And then just supports the academic achievement through personalized learning. And I think I wrote that twice, but really that focus of being able to stay connected to our learners over the year and over, you know, each year over the four years.
Is this something where the mentors will follow the kids? Like you'll have the same mentor throughout?
Yes. Yes. So they get to know the learners over time. They're connected to how they're doing academically. They can reach out, we can, you know, to the school counseling team, we can be in those classrooms. We definitely see it's a place where we can go in and do programming. And the other thing is when we have bigger things to do, we can extend that time. We've done that before, taken time off our, our blocks at the high school and extending our mentoring time. When maybe we're doing things like program of studies or, um, talking about testing. And it provides us an opportunity where, where all the learners are in one place, working together as a community too. Not just with the teacher, but they stay together as learners. So it becomes a community within the school. And the next slide. You know, we talked a little bit about the eight period and really our, our ninth graders have eight periods in a sense, because during office hours, um, every other week, they are taking a course called freshman foundations. And in that they are building their personal learning plan, which connects them to their four-year planning, which eventually will help support that capstone experience that they'll have as seniors. Once again, um, we want to work more collaboratively with teachers, with Dana Jackson, who oversees that program. School counselors want to be involved in that. And so this would actually become a course that our freshmen will take as one of those skinnies. Um, and so that would be a great opportunity to also help them as part of the transition from eighth to ninth grade. It also would allow us to schedule that senior capstone as an actual course so that we're making sure that we're supporting our learners throughout that process and helping them be successful. We already talked about the opportunity of having learners be able to double up. And there are some examples with world language and science and math. And then, you know, it does move the opportunity for them to take from seven courses to eight courses. And so, you know, being able to spread that over time is, is helpful. So those are some of the improved options that an eight period day or four blocks a day would provide us.
We're going to try to move a little quickly through the rest, but no, we just have a lot of information. I hope that, I hope that what's coming across is that we've been meeting, talking with our stakeholders in the school and trying to plan for what's best for our kids. So I just wanted to couch what comes next with, so a little bit of history about block scheduling. It has been at our school before. Um, we've started it in 2006. I went all the way back and researched when we started it. It was just a little bit before my time here. But 2006 was the first year of block scheduling. There was a teacher committee, my first couple of years here that reviewed that schedule and made some recommendations in 2012. The recommendations from the teachers at the time was to keep the block schedule, but make some adjustments to better support some of their disciplines. In 2015, there was a school board committee that voted to change the schedule to a seven period hybrid, which started in 2015 and then was modified two years later to the current seven period schedule. So my point with this is that we've had this before and teachers in the past have recognized the value of it. Whatever the reasons for the shift, I think it prevent, presents an opportunity to carefully, if this is the direction the board chooses to go, shift back. And again, budget is the impetus for this change, but there are some values to it as well. So we're going to share some insight on how we would plan to roll this out with our staff.
And as wonderful and exciting as all that conversation is about the schedule, the time, the minutes, I'm going to talk about what really matters. That's the teaching and the learning. Our teachers are concerned. They've asked, especially our younger teachers, is someone going to help us figure out how to teach in 88 minute blocks? And the learners have asked, how am I going to sit still for 88 minutes? Oh no, do not sit still for 88 minutes. That is not what block teaching is all about. My point is, we have a collaborative, um, a culture here at the middle high school of ongoing site-based professional development. Every day I'm working with teachers on what, uh, specific strategies to improve their instruction, their assessment to increase engagement with the learners. We recognize that moving to block for the high school level will require a great deal of professional development to get us all ready. So one piece that is going to move us in this direction to something called power standards. Power standards are where we look at our voluminous amount of standards that the state wants us to teach. I was looking at grade eight math standards on the New Hampshire Department of Education site earlier. And in conjunction with the PSAT assessment and what the state of New Hampshire is guiding us to teach, there are 106 standards, 106 standards we must teach in the eighth grade in math alone. That's impossible. That's impossible. So we need to better identify what are the key essential, non-negotiable standards that all of our learners need to really understand at a deep level, rather than just doing surface survey of all of this content and these skills. I pulled together some of my favorite education gurus. Robert Marzano says that in order to cover all of the content, we would need to change from K-12 to K-22. Some interesting quotes there, talking about how power standards are absolutely critical. In the power standard model, we will delve deeply. We will increase the rigor and the level of thinking so that the learners not only understand at a deeper level, the content and the skills, but their thinking processes have strengthened that will apply to every other area. So some points to consider, teacher input, responsive monitoring and revision if needed, and instructional strategies and ongoing professional development. So those are the three key points that we really need to pay attention to when considering our request for block scheduling. For teacher input, we met with the teachers, as Mr. Dustin has said. We asked, what are you concerned about? They bravely said, we can't do it if we're teaching world language year one. Algebra, the foundation of math skills in the high school setting. We need these kids all year. Conversely, teachers of the advanced courses said, this isn't enough time for us. We need more time. So we're looking at all these different requests from the teachers. In addition, the teachers ask for what the scheduling, the, um, the, the way that the classes are arranged so that they could do a lot more collaboration. We need to be responsive as we monitor, talking to all of our stakeholders. How is it going? What's working? What's not working? What do we do? That's one thing that our administrative team is very good at is we're constantly, almost to a fault, self reflecting. How can we be better? How can we support our teachers, our learners so that we can be better? John Hattie wrote book Visible Learning, 250 plus influences on student learning. 80,000 studies across the world were examined and it, and to determine what works best in education. When I was looking at this, I was looking to see what are the most important variables that tie with accelerated learning for students? Teaching that focuses on student learning strategies, focusing on the learner and the learner needs. Does the learner need more enrichment? Does the learner need more remediation? Teachers need to be able to do that. And the other is teacher instructional strategies that involve inquiry, active learning, self-reflection, a lot of activity. The block provides time for that. Oh, and then the last thing that we need, which I think is the most important, is ongoing site-based professional development. We don't need to use any time leaving the building for professional development. We've got it right here among our teachers, among our staff, with each other. There are two areas of professional development that we must address. Generic instructional strategies for teaching the block that would apply to any situation. And then content or grade specific. And these are just some ideas for things that we're going to be working on with the teachers.
Um, you mentioned something about power goals, right? Is that what you said?
Yes, power standards, priorities.
Yes. So what happens to all the progressions?
Well, the
for the teachers to follow.
The progressions are standards. So if you can equate them a little bit. Starting tomorrow, I've got a group of six through eight math teachers that are examining their current learning progressions from the viewpoint of what is essential? What can be at a supplemental skill or standard that they can weave in throughout the year? What are the most important target areas where our kids need to master that math content? So they're ready for the next grade, the next year, ready for their life.
So taking the progressions that are there and just pulling out the essential ones, not revamping?
We're never going to throw everything out. We're looking at what is, we're looking at our assessment data. Where are we doing well? Where are we having some weaknesses? Using that, our third party assessment data with SAS, maps, PSAT, using all of that. The teachers are doing this work. Those teachers know those kids. They know what needs to be taught. So rather than top down us saying, okay, here are your new standards. The teachers who are in the trenches are going to be doing that work collaboratively with us to identify.
So the short answer is we're not throwing the progressions out. It's more like putting a spotlight on the, the power standards as a team and then really framing those with the, with what's called can do statements to help the teachers better identify how to weave in different measures of learning as they go through. Okay. So now this slide here is what this change would, I guess, purchase on the other side of things with the efficiency part of the conversation. I want to be clear that I would not propose a schedule change just this year for the sake of doing it. So yes, we are providing a lot of information on what could positively come out of this to support learning. Yes, we can use half days of PD time with our staff to get them ready. Yes, in the long run, I think there'll be a lot of benefits, but in the short run, it's going to be a transition and that's rough. But the purpose of doing it now is getting in front of the need for some possible reductions, of which I think this schedule shift would allow the middle high school to generate four reductions in staff or FTEs. This schedule would allow us to reduce a high school math position. And I'll, on the, on the subsequent slide, show you what that impact would be on a block schedule. To reduce a full PE position, half middle school, half high school. To reduce half of a social studies and half of an English or full social studies, depending on how things were structured. And there was another position that we were going to repurpose to support our access program, which is an alternative sort of learning environment that we would instead eliminate instead of filling with this position. So that's a total of four positions that would be removed if this schedule change was made. Now, if you said make the cuts anyway and don't change the schedule, this is not what I would propose to, to make shifts in. Just to be clear, this is what I think is the least impactful because of the possible change to a schedule. And I've already spoken with individuals who could potentially be affected by this down the road. So under the math example, if we were to, again, eliminate one position, we have a retirement in STEM. So that position, that individual could shift over to teach, fill that retirement essentially in STEM. And because that person is a math teacher, that would allow them to, to continue teaching two sections of math, which would keep math sort of flat at 20 sections. Okay. Yep.
And my understanding is in our consent agenda tonight, that individual was approved.
Correct.
Transfer.
Correct. Yep. And we also would send the algebra one honors section that the high school is teaching this year for eighth grade back to the eighth grade math teacher to teach next year. So they would actually end up with 21 sections under this model. Social studies having a half of a position eliminated would be at 21 sections. If we were to move to a block versus 20 now, so it's a half of a position cut, but they would pick up a section. And English likewise would go from 20 sections now to 21 sections with that half position cut next year. STEM next year, 20 sections right now, they would go up to 24 sections next year. If you pull out the two that the new teacher you just approved to transfer would teach, they'd have 22, which is still a pickup of two sections. So that's how you, you know, you can sort of see that with a schedule change, the eliminations, this is where the efficiency comes in of those positions. this is where the efficiency comes in of those positions, would not cause any loss of programming. On the PE side, there's a bit of an impact on the high school. There's 10 sections available now for the high school PE situation. We would go to six sections. However, based on sign-ups for courses, we're very confident those courses can handle and actually operate better with more numbers. It can be quite awkward to have seven learners or whatever in a PE class. So getting those, some of those, we had one or two sections this year that could be boosted up by combining them. And on the flip side, we had a little bit of undercapacity in the middle school, so that would help to alleviate that by transitioning that over. And the positive is that under this model shift, all of our other courses that aren't affected by cuts would pick up multiple sections to support learners. So it's a positive on that side of things as well. So then we look at personnel. We don't want to lose our teachers. You know, as Ruben had said earlier on, looking at attrition first is really important. And even though we had some niche areas of retirement, this, the proposed adjustments that I'm putting forward here would result in only losing one teacher who otherwise would not have been leaving. So we would be looking at, as was already done tonight, shifting the math person over to the STEM position. So that's a loss of position in math, but not a loss of a teacher who is well-liked and doing well with his role. The reduction in the English and social studies, we have an English teacher who has a social studies background as well. She's expressed a lot of desire to teach some social studies. I met with her again recently just to confirm that that was still an interest. She's expressed down the road, possibly even looking at doing some combination of humanities or things like that. But this is sort of a logical step. So splitting that individual, half English, half social studies, and then transferring one full-time social studies teacher to fill a middle school retirement would, again, prevent any loss of personnel. And then because we haven't hired the STEM co-teacher who would support that alternative learning program, there's no loss of individual there because that position was going to be repurposed from somewhere else anyways. So it's the PE position that would result in the loss of one existing staff member, although there is an opportunity potentially for that person to also find employment in a different sort of role. So again, the positive and what we've tried to do is minimize impact on learners or do better for them if possible, minimize impact on staff, improve learning if that's possible with the model shift, which we believe it is, and to keep the teachers that we care about who are doing a really great job, which by and large this proposal would do. So the last thing, just a couple of quick notes on the learner side of learner culture, and then we'll wrap up.
You know, one of the things that we talk about is, you know, our classroom and our campus-wide behavior. And if things aren't going well, then it's going to be tough to learn. So when you look at all the studies longitudinally, one of the things that is consistent is if you have less transitions, then there's less problems. If you think about, you know, trying to get anything accomplished, if you're constantly interrupted, then it's hard to refocus. So having the longer chunk of time in a, you know, in the high school, you have that ability to do some things about, you know, not only building your culture in the classroom, getting to know kids. And if you have a connection with those learners, then it's gonna, you're gonna benefit in the long run. If you don't have those connections because there's constant interruptions, you know, that's harder sometimes to grab onto those learners. And the behaviors that we're seeing is that a little bit more than 50% of our behaviors are in those non-structured times. So it could be in passing, it could be in the cafeteria, it could be in recess. That's probably not a shock. But that's, you know, if you reduce some of those transition times, then you're going to reduce some of those potential conflicts. Does that reduce issues outside of the day? You know, I don't even want to get into social media, but certainly it helps. If you have less opportunities to go and do, you know, a shoulder tap or something like that, it's better. Plus, it builds a better culture because you're not having kids, you know, worrying about, you know, the little things and what we would perceive as adult that are the big things in their life. So, you know, I think the big thing is when I looked at the statistics today, I was, I don't know why I was surprised, but 50% of our discipline was in those unstructured times. But there's the data behind it, so. And then, next slide. And these two things, you know, piggyback, they go together. If you have kids that are invested, you know, if they are connected with their teachers and their classmates and, you know, they're learning on, you know, it could be a specific power standard, but working together, collaborating, you know, that's going to create cohesiveness. It's, again, it's not necessarily this huge, you know, earth-shattering statement. If people and if kids like what they're doing, they're more productive. Happy workers are productive workers. And so building those relationships into a block schedule is going to give you the opportunity to go a little bit deeper. You know, we talked about having that mentoring time. We could have an assembly. You know, we could spend some time doing something that as a school community we want to do. It could be something that maybe within the community that, hey, let's do a fundraiser for X, Y, or Z. Or, you know, maybe have some time that we want to celebrate some of the major accomplishments that our learners are having. So having that, you know, time built in, we're hoping obviously now that we're hopefully, you know, leaving COVID, is that, you know, kids will feel more invested. And I think that's a challenge where any school is nowadays, is that climate. And it all boils down to, can you make those relationships? So I don't know if anybody has any questions? Thank you.
So next steps, we're hoping to see, and again, we understand this is 100% dependent on the decisions that this board makes. But we're under a bit of a time crunch, you know, in terms of the personnel side of things. We can't really move forward with finalizing the transfers or finalizing conversations about whose position may be eliminated or shifted until we know where we're going. If the board ultimately decides this isn't the direction they'd like to go, then we'd have to have more intense conversations again, looking at a sort of plan B that would propose potential other cuts. So we kind of would need that information pretty quickly. The other piece is that our staff need the time to start doing the collaborative PD immediately if they're going to make a shift like this. So we're hopeful that the board will make a decision and approve the schedule shift or give us a different direction altogether if this isn't something the board feels it can support. But assuming that that one way or the other, we move forward, we still would then move on to the next step, which is building a master schedule around what we'll be dealing with next year. And then if we're moving forward with a schedule shift, particularly in the high school, beginning right away with these half-day onsite PDs during the school day to provide some of the training on how to use the time effectively and begin the co-planning process and things like that. So I know the board, you know, likes to have time to deliberate and discuss. We're just hopeful that the process can move as quickly as possible so we can have some direction and clarity to start making those decisions with our staff as soon as possible.
David, the alternative to this is staying with the schedule that you are on right now?
Correct.
With cuts of teachers?
I'm assuming that the cuts to teachers is something that the board eventually will recommend. I mean, I'm not, I'm not the decision-maker with that. I just know based on the financial conversations that Ruben shared earlier and sort of conversations that he's had with some administrators, that that's a direction we may need to go. So staying on the seven period, if the board says, yeah, we still need to look for some position reductions, it would look different than this. I would not propose these reductions if we stay on the same schedule.
Okay. That's a lot to digest.
Yes.
Are there any questions, any initial questions that people have?
Can you go around? Is that?
Sure.
Sure, we all have stuff.
Yeah.
Stay close, you three.
Christine, do you mind if I just say? I just want to commend you for looking at this scenario as an opportunity as opposed to a problem. Yeah, it's a dilemma for certain, but looking at it and taking it with your staff as an opportunity. I think the collaborative, there's no way that what you presented earlier about the collaborative nature of your staff right now and the work that they're doing, the creation and the co-creating that they're doing and so forth, isn't, I mean, that certainly has allowed for this to take place, which is good. And it sounds like there's some opportunities if you were to go down this route, especially when you, if you're going to be able to guarantee that they have that common time.
Right.
That would grow at a higher rate. You mentioned Hattie. Hattie's number one impact on student outcomes from an academic standpoint, doesn't talk about social emotional or anything of that nature. That meta-analysis that he does is teacher collective efficacy. And that is by far the most important. And when that only happens through providing teacher leadership opportunities and the opportunity to collaborate and together believe that they can accomplish something significantly. So, you know, it was a, thank you for the time that you took to do this.
Yeah, I mean, we've spent, as you can see, a lot of time pondering and planning what this could look like. I also will say that I'm extremely proud of our staff's collaboration. You know, we had a pretty heavy meeting on this topic just to discuss. Again, we went through all of these pieces with them as well, but their reaction was exactly what you just said, which made me incredibly proud of them. You know, it sounds like we're thinking of ways to support each other and to support learners, and there's ways to grow this into an opportunity for us and for the kids to improve our school. And that's where some of the co-teaching conversations came about. That's where I think we've had two teams approach Heather, saying, you know what? This is a great opportunity to pull that power standards work up. We were going to do it next year. Let's do it now. So almost across the board, our staff has blown me away as well with their desire and willingness to be collaborative and look at this as an opportunity that they didn't necessarily see coming immediately, but that they're going to grab by the horns and do their best with.
And to add, the, for the board, the research, the active research on co-teaching, since it's been mentioned multiple times, is spotty. Meaning in some areas where things are implemented properly, you see significant results. And if you don't implement it properly, it's a bit of, not a good, it's not a good model. But in any cases where they have co-taught, teacher wellness has turned out to be better in those cases. And then that usually translates to student learning as well. So it's a good social, emotional if they are ready to do it and if they want to do it and if they choose to take that time to use it that way.
Okay. So thank you for that additional information. Certainly would say you really seem to have worked through this and really prepared. Christine, do you want?
So this is like super duper impressive. I can't believe how quickly you put this all together. I mean, it's very impressive. My concern is for students who have attention problems. And I know you've talked about this, you've each talked about it a little bit, but it's a, for a high school student with attention problems, you know, 88 minutes can be a long time to space out. So I know you're going to work on that and come up with creative ways to keep pulling students in, but that's my number one concerns for those learners who just, might just fade away.
I think that's a really great point. I think the critical piece with that is how teachers structure that 88 minutes of time. You know, I was a pretty good student in a lot of my classes in school, but I, there were classes that were lecture for 60 or 70 minutes, and I got lost. You know, it's, it's common. So teachers looking at that timeframe, how can I start with a hook, get the learners moving, get them pulled into the content? Thinking if there's a direct instruction component, what that can look like and what's a reasonable chunk of time. But then making sure there's independent or group work time and activities that take place that immediately put the learning to use. I think that's the critical piece to keeping learners engaged, regardless of whether they have generally the attention challenges or are just, you know, intrinsically always on task. So you're exactly right. It's why that training piece and starting it as soon as possible, and especially building in that collaborative planning is so important. Because what we don't want to see is 43 minutes, you know, I had 45 minutes and 45 minutes for two days, and now it's just 90 minutes of me lecturing or whatever. We can't have that.
Okay, Daisy, do you have anything you'd like to?
The only thing that, it was a great presentation. The only thing that really stumped me on it was because I didn't go to school here, some of the things are totally different than my school. What is a senior capstone?
That's a great question. So last year, we presented a freshman foundations to senior capstone sort of program that starts with our freshmen doing some career explorations, looking at what their pathway might look like over the four years, starting to firm up some different avenues that they might see post-secondary, whether that be this career and I'll go to college, I'll join the military, and then this will be my plan after, I'll go into a career in this type of area. So that was the freshman foundations piece, and the senior capstone was designed to pull that learning together after they've had their time in Conant and either do an internship in the field, do some early college classes, do an extended learning opportunity, and then pull that learning back into the school and present on what they've learned over that four-year period of time to their community.
Okay.
So it's new, it's effective with this year's freshmen as a graduation requirement, so we won't see the first ones for a couple more years.
Okay. That was pretty much it. It jumped out.
Thank you for asking that. It's, we're excited to start developing that, no matter what we do, to get ready for the next couple of years.
And Lisa?
So I got, I had the benefit of working here seven of the years that we had block scheduling, and my kids went here during that time. So I can speak to, you know, complimenting you guys on looking at that as an option. And that 88 minutes is not too long for kids. They do just fine. It's not, still less than a feature-length movie, so they're fine. And, and the teaching does get very creative and it builds more relationships, like it's not. And it was interesting, you mentioned the kids who have more, a hard time with attention. Kim, what you had said about the transitions, that killed my kids who have problems with attention. It's, it's moving from thinking about, now I have this due in this class, in two minutes I have completely different thing to do. And, yeah, you remember, Heather, you know, just trying to get the, how do you get these assignments right? And having that time really slows that down. So I think this would fix, yeah, some of those office hours problems. My concern is the biggest problem that happened with it. I'm not seeing that you're fixing it because you're actually rearranging staff to lesson staff. The biggest problem is study hall. That there are kids who do not have classes, do not have a place to be. And I was here for seven years in the library, and it was always full. And there were kids, there were freshmen with three hours a day with no classes. And, and they were just there. And that was, that, I don't know how you're going to fix it with your staff.
So, you know, I think that's, I think that was an administrative decision that created that. Just looking at the numbers, crunching the sections that we have now, crunching the current number of learners. We were very confident that freshmen and sophomores would have full schedules. We already instituted, as of this year, a junior block on campus for just juniors, and it's been very successful. Most of them are spending their time in the library, and there's a, in the lilac room, there's a booth system that's been set up to support juniors and seniors. I remember. And our seniors, of course, have work release and senior privilege and things like that. So we're not advocating or planning or going to, on the administrative side, approve of study halls anyways. Having been a teacher at the time, I know exactly what you're referring to, and that was, I can only guess, an administrative decision based on what we're seeing with the numbers now.
I saw something that confused me. You're cutting PE to consolidate, make it more efficient, but at the same time trying to put PE as a wellness as a everyday block? How does that even work?
So we're doing for just sixth grade, because sixth grade is actually PE and health combined. It's a wellness class. This year, we ran it as a half of a year. Next year, with picking up the additional sections with an eight-period day, we would be able to add that for just sixth grade as 45 minutes all year long. We would still continue to have it as a half-year for seventh, eighth grade, and then a block, a block for a quarter for high school. So again, just crunching numbers, looking at mock schedules, the sections, we would have the capacity to do that even with the reduction in a PE specifically, PE teacher, if we moved to a block. If we didn't, we would not have that capacity anymore.
Yeah, and my biggest, my biggest concern was what you called non-structured times. That, that really was, that really killed kids. So I do just watch your scheduling. That's going to be hard. Next, okay, I have a recommendation and with a, with a question. Heather, you mentioned how you're going to teach differently. You put out a lot of terms, a lot of books, a lot of texts. I get it. Okay, a lot of research. I get it. There is no time for teachers to learn how to teach differently in the next 10 weeks. There's, they don't have time right now. They're stretched. So when, will they do this? Like, how will you train them to teach this?
David has supported a culture of ongoing professional development built into our school day. We not only have PLCs, professional learning communities, we also have the opportunity to take half-day or even full-day professional development days where we would have a substitute cover that class while the cohort of teachers meets with me or is under guidance with a specific focus to engage in that professional development. So we're planning to do it. So we're planning to do it. We do it all the time for various things. But now it would be with a very targeted nature to get ready for the block scheduling. Do you see any issues with the time crunch? You should see my, in my office, I've got the, the calendars up where people are already signing up for professional development days. And the response has been very, very positive.
My recommendation in this is something that I brought up at the beginning of the, of the year. I, I worked with the Menon School District and during COVID, we implemented something that was so successful that we continued it beyond, hoping beyond, but it is continuing. We created something called the soft opening, which took the first couple of days of the school year and did not have any instruction. It was really an open house, basically where families would come in. There would be scheduled time and they would have an extended time with the teachers in the classrooms. And I really can't recommend this highly enough when you're doing something as drastic as this to have this kind of an, it's an open house without any of the academic pressure. You know, picture an open house where you don't have parents saying to you, why did you give my kid this grade? Which they're not supposed to do, but they have, that happens. But it was this, the response from the community was so positive. We had an outstanding turnout each of the years we've done this. And it's, it's an exceptional way to simply give teachers a little extra time. They, it's, it becomes a part planning day for them, gives them a little extra planning time, getting their rooms ready. And it gives the parents and families time to really ask questions very deeply without the pressure of that evening social. Can't recommend it highly enough. I hope you guys consider it. Sorry. I'm not crying, just coughing. Please consider a soft opening.
I think that's a little above, above just my pay grade individually, but I think it's something that sounds like would be a good conversation to have. I think, you know, thinking of our PD's at, days at the beginning of the year, how we can use those perhaps, I don't know. But it sounds like it's a great way to get families connected without the pressure of an October date.
Okay. Charlie.
Yeah. Thank you, David. You answered a lot of my questions. I happened to see this beforehand. And he did answer, you know, they all answered some, some critical questions relative to the issues that we had with block scheduling before. One of the biggest issues with block scheduling that we had before was we took a seven-period curriculum and we jammed it into three blocks and a skinny. And nothing changed. They taught the same stuff. Okay. So if you taught for eighty eight minutes, you're basically teaching two periods. And the end result was no difference in student performance. But it required a lot more teachers to teach three blocks in the skin. And the skinnies were, there weren't enough skinnies because skinnies are for things where you have to repeat, you know, you have to have repetitive practice like math and, and music, those kinds of things. So that's one of the reasons why the block schedule, we left the block schedule because we were in a situation similar to what we are now, which is the block schedule required more teachers. So one of the ways of, of getting the same materials taught with a smaller number of teachers was by going from a block to a seven period. However, if we can overcome the, what Lisa said, which was, you know, getting our curriculum changed so that we're not teaching the same as we taught a seven-period schedule. Okay. I think with the leadership team we have, we can be successful. I have the utmost faith in David, Kim, Heather and Rachel, and I think we can pull this off. If we don't, you may not want to change, but, but if we are two or three years down the road and we see that our student performance is decreasing rather than increasing, then we'll have to make some changes.
Sure.
So from my perspective, there's a lot to do and the sooner we can get started, the better off we're going to be. That's my concerns.
All right. Thanks, Joe. Kim?
I feel like I asked one question. I, I guess the only thing when she sets off the opening and she's not even here anymore, but was, um, what do they run? Like, do teachers run a schedule and parents just go in? Yeah, that's for her. I'll ask her later. Thank you. Great job. It's a lot of information.
So thanks for answering all the questions during. But, um, so I was part of that two thousand and six change. I graduated two thousand and seven. I thought it was terrible. I felt like the, the education went down. We spent a lot more time sitting around in the classes with teachers just giving you more free time to do your homework. So I mean, being a senior, I really didn't care if I went out of school. But in a whole, I thought the education went down and it, it created a lot of scheduling problems for like the junior people. Not so much myself because I only had to do, you know, go leave for work and fun stuff. But so that being said, we're, right now we're having a teacher shortage and that was, that's been one of your largest complaints. This entire COVID that we've been dealing with. And so if one of these teachers comes down with COVID, I'm assuming we're going to follow the same protocols and have them isolate for, what is it? Five days now? The CDC recommends or whatnot. So if a teacher's up for five days, how much class, how much education of the children are going to be missing for these eighty-eight minute classes for a week compared to the shorter classes that they're, they'd be missing right now? And, but the, I do like what you guys are doing with the, the middle school. Personally recommended for the middle school, the, the split where the teachers can actually work together. The co-teaching, I think that's great. But yeah. So that was, that was pretty much that. And then my question is, why are we instantly targeting a reduction in the teachers opposed to looking at other avenues like admin such? Is that something that we've looked into?
So yes, I mean, I would not obviously advocate a reduction in administration or counseling, given the current environment. We're already at three administrators in our building, including the principal. And while our behavior issues have stabilized, they certainly haven't disappeared. I think if you look at the day-to-day for Rachel, who primarily handles behavior right now. You know, she and I end up collaborating a lot of times because there is an overflow of what she can handle by herself. If you look at the teacher support and curriculum work that Heather's doing, because our district does not have a curriculum director, which most districts do, that work falls on building level administration in collaboration with the principal and Ruben. You know, her position, if it was eliminated, would end a lot of that instructional work that's taking place. And on the counseling side where we haven't had, you know, stable counseling leadership to build and develop programs. We've had a lot of parent feedback over the last at least four or five years of the difficulties there. And we've seen the impact on kids in terms of not having that guidance support for post-secondary planning or having the ability to get into classrooms. This is the first year they've done that. Where they've been consistently in classrooms, doing social emotional learning with learners for at least four or five years. So you could certainly make a reduction in one of those areas. I think the impact of that will be much further reaching in terms of support for teachers to do what they do in the classrooms. The less you have of administration and counseling, the more that those burdens fall back on the classroom teacher in addition to their teaching responsibilities. So I would not advocate for a reduction there, certainly that the board could make its own decision about that. But I don't think that would be appropriate with the needs of our learners and staff.
If I may, I appreciate your.
I appreciate your question about the eighty-eight minute block of period, block of time for a substitute. And I'm going to be adding that to my list of professional development talks if you indeed support the block. Thank you.
Okay. So this has been a great series of questions and, you know, comments, both pro and and concerns. So thank you, everybody. And I guess, Ruben, how would you like us to proceed? We have talked about having time to consider, but also having a short timeframe.
Sure. So, I mean, I, I, I support the work that this team right here is doing and would want to give them and the faculty and staff every opportunity to move forward and not waste time if this is a direction that we would want to go. I have, I've reviewed, I mean, some, some of these slides I had, I've not seen before until tonight. Added a few. But the, the concepts and the theory and the effort behind all of it, I think is sound. You know, we talked about the fact that professional development in order to put something like this in place would have to be not only started very quickly and continuously all the way through the rest of the spring, we'd have to consider to also look at some planning for summertime for certain groups of individuals. Not necessarily all, all staff, but certain groups that would need to do maybe a little more curriculum work. So that's some work that we'll have to start planning. And then it would, it has to go on all the way through next year. So this goes into our five-year planning. Three of you, you've received a notebook tonight. One item that you would not have received from Nick before was a draft five-year plan. So you have a forty-four-page detailed kind of sketch of some work that we're doing this year and continuing on. So you can kind of get the idea this falls in line with that. So as long as the block is used appropriately. You know, uh, learning is, Charlie, you're correct. There's no data out there that says that one is necessarily better on student learning than others. But we do know when opportunities are utilized well, such as we talked about co-teaching. That is, you know, put into place properly, that it is enormously powerful. You have enormously powerful outcomes, especially for students who are with disabilities. When you, you utilize time, such that we have a focus on deeper learning, wanting to make sure that happens now. You have to have a staff that's ready to do that. If the staff is ready to go forward, then these blocks, this block schedule will likely add significantly more of a robust learning experience for our learners than currently the seven periods of going in and out of class. I mean, think about a student right now who doesn't have the skills, doesn't have the executive functioning skills and is going from to seven different periods, having to juggle seven different assignments, having to figure out, you know, there's, there's some good there as well. Again, very good counter examples provided. Those can't happen. Those have to be, you know, the moment that something like that takes place has to be addressed. But you've already talked about that. You know that. You're, you're well aware. So I think the, the biggest thing that is necessary is if we were to move forward with that. And I recommend moving forward with this, with this. I think it's, it's a innovative way to continue moving in the direction that the school district's already moving in. I think it's an avenue that is, you know, we've, we've talked for years about more, it is a more efficient model. You know, you're going to get to the point where you can only go so far with efficiencies. And I think we're getting to the end of that if we go, once we go this direction. But I think that that's, that's not a bad thing to do. And I think it's well thought out. It's, it's, it's solid with research. From a financial standpoint, just so that you understand as a board, what their proposal does mean is we estimate that every staff member in in different categories kind of have different average costs. The average costs of the individuals that you'd be talking about here would be eighty thousand per. That is not what people make salary-wise, but what they make on average salary-wise with health benefits, with FICA, with retired New Hampshire retirement, all those things added together, sometimes a little higher, sometimes it's lower. So when you average them together, just so that you have, have an understanding of what I talked about financially beforehand. That's four times that eighty thousand. So that's three hundred and twenty thousand. Now again, that could be minus twenty thousand, depending on the specific situation, or it could be more than that, or it could be right on. There are, there are averages. So I think it's, it's practical. And I think the only reason why I say I would go forward now and, and recommend moving forward, apart from the, the need for professional development and get going and planning and so forth, is that you've taken into consideration how we can do it as one of my slides earlier. How we can do it without loss of staff, you know, and, and we've already, already taken care of that through a transfer tonight. So I appreciate the administration's dedication to taking care of the, the staff members of the school. Through, I mean, we, we're in a default budget, right? This is, there are other areas that we need to look. That's why I've asked, kind of recommended that we, that the board consider. You know, probably making a motion tonight to say facilities committee, facilities, sorry, finance committee. And, you know, with administration, let's continue to brainstorm and come back with some other ideas. This is a, this is an innovative idea that accomplishes some of what we, what we need. The, the second, the other reason I was saying that why we would want to make some movement on this is that there's a lot of communication that would have to happen with this. There's a lot of parental communication, a lot of community communication on this one. A lot of, lot of student communication, learner communication on this one. You know, we, this is a significant, significant shift if we were to move forward. That we'd have to provide several, you know, sessions, learning sessions for the, for step for parents. Not, probably not as much with the middle school because the shift, as you said, isn't as drastic. I don't. We would have to plan those throughout the spring and then throughout the summer to make sure that that, that takes place and people have had adequate, their adequate time to get their questions answered and their concerns addressed. So I don't know what we would gain by putting this decision off for another month unless it was for the purpose of needing to gain more feedback on this. But it's, it's well thought out. And if the staff is able to move forward with it, let's give them the tools they need.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, so what we're looking at is keeping the schedule the way it is or changing to the block scheduling. Right? That's what the two proposals of schedules would be right now. Um, I guess I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, there's a lot of information. But it seems like there's constantly, it's, it's constantly between block scheduling or not, block scheduling. And that's the flip-flop that we keep seeing. And I can remember hearing multiple times in my years of, no, this one's going to stay. No, no, this one is the one we're going to use. And I feel like it's constantly that, like, so now we're changing them into another schedule so that we can say, no, 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 this is the one. And like, the, the time that's hard is, it is a big chunk of time. And to, to fill that and to make sure that it's, you know, well thought out. And I know that the teachers are more than easily going to be able to do that. They're very, very good at their jobs. But still thinking about those kids and how hard that, that time is. And then it doesn't work. And we're into another change. And I get it, if something doesn't work, we do have to make the change. So that's where I'm in my head of like, trying to understand the emergency of like, the urgency of being like, okay, we have to make a decision really, really quickly. But at the same time, I feel like my head is just like, there's so much.
Yeah, there's a lot here.
To think about.
That's true. That's true. So I think the driving factor behind this is the fact that we have a default budget. We have to come up with about nine hundred thousand dollars, all right, that we cannot spend next year that we had planned on spending. Seventy-five percent of our cost is salary and benefits. So it's impossible to try to cut all of that, the twenty-five percent of the budget we have left. Because all your utilities are going up, all your transportation costs are going up, your, your contracts are going up, your rents are going up, your lands and facilities are going up, everything's going up next year. And we're looking at, we planned on an inflation rate around back in November when we did the budget, we planned on. Back in November, when we did the budget, we planned on a inflation rate around two percent. Right now, we're looking at a, a. A seven percent, but by the end of the year, we're looking at maybe three point eight percent. If you take two percent of uh. Our, our default and, and you find out that roughly that's um. About. Five hundred thousand dollars, alright, so that's five hundred thousand dollars right there that we didn't even plan on. That we now have to spend and we have to go back to a default to do it as well. So from my perspective, I, you know, congratulate our staff for pitching in and saying, look, if we really have to. Make some cuts, here are some places where we can make some cuts. And by the way, we're cutting four positions, but we're only cutting one staff. And I hate to see that one staff go, but someplace along the line, when seventy-five percent of your cost is staff, you gotta look hard at it. So I'm, I'm skeptical because I haven't seen it work before. Alright, I haven't seen us go to a block schedule and it work. However, I trust you guys. So I'm willing to make a motion that we adopt the block schedule for the high school and the eighth period schedule for the middle school.
Great.
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Charlie, thank you, Daisy. And now, uh, chance for discussion. So we've already had some discussion, but any questions, comments, and?
So we're trying to make this decision right now, to say yes, they can look forward block scheduling or no.
Yes, that's, that, so what Ruben has asked us or suggested is, is that we do, that we consider that. Now, you know, depending on what we decide here, we can either do that or not. Uh, tonight, but he's made the case, and I think that the staff has made the case that there's some definite benefit in. Deciding sooner rather than later.
I do, I do understand that, for sure.
I would like to say one more thing, and that is, um. We have a big increase in the proposed budget in special ed, and those are mandates, okay? So we can't cut special ed, so, and that's about thirty percent of our budget. So when we're looking at places to cut, any place you look, you're gonna, it's gonna have a negative impact. So what we're doing is we're, we're balancing what is gonna have the least negative impact instead of what's gonna have a positive impact. Although David says this will have a positive impact.
I don't think it's gonna, like, my personal opinion on my experience, I don't think going to block scheduling is. Gonna have a positive impact on the education that we're giving our children. Um, I would much rather wait, um, even if it's only a couple of weeks and we schedule another meeting. To vote on this, but I'd rather wait for the finance group to get together and try to put together a creative solution. Where we can save money while staying on our current scheduling that we have, but.
I, I don't know.
We talked about in the next, in two weeks, or is that not, is it?
I'm okay with waiting two weeks.
Yeah.
Alright, well, if we, if we have, if we have people behind it, because, I mean, where we're at right now, we're meeting again this week, and we will know. Uh, this week.
Yeah.
Where that money's coming from.
I would like.
And I will guarantee you, unless you wanna shut off something, like the lights or something like that.
And I'm not saying that I'm completely opposed to block scheduling, I just feel like. There's so much to think about. I don't feel like I can make an educated decision right now, I'd be like, oh yeah, there's that, cause. Absorbing that. Is that right?
I would have loved to have seen the timing of this conversation happen when we had months to consider it too. Teacher contracts are due within a couple of weeks, we, we don't have time. Yeah, the teachers' contracts actually are mandated to be in, so we don't have that opportunity.
Yeah.
Uh, Nick. Um, just one more point to consider with the whole finance committee conversation is based on having new board members, we. Um, only have one board member on that committee right now, so there's just a, in addition to the timeliness, is there two now?
Two.
Okay.
Alright, so, um. So, so I'm hearing some discomfort with moving forward now, but we have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded, so. As I understand it, the only way to. Uh, delay the decision would be for the motion to be defeated or withdrawn or.
Yep.
Okay, what about more discussion? Is there anybody else that has anything?
So Lisa, you said like, we can't wait, there has to be, you're, you're feeling like with the, with um, contracts and stuff coming out, we can't. Give it this week for like knowing more, I wanna get it, it could just be. It can't happen. But what you're saying is like, there's no more waiting, like. Not a week.
So I'd like, I would like to go to the finance meeting and help create a. A alternate uh, solution, so we don't have to go to block scheduling. That I, I feel very strongly that it's, it's not beneficial to the children. So I would like, I would like for us to try to change the, it to come back in two weeks, vote on it. And. Maybe present a different way that we can go about this.
I'll tell you what, John, I withdraw my motion. Because I think this is an important thing, and we should have the entire board unanimously behind it. So rather than have any kind of split decision, I would prefer. To, I'll, I'll make my motion in the next board meeting. In the meantime, I would like. To know if we can move forward with any aspect of this. Pending that vote.
Okay, Charlie, thank you. Uh, Ruben, uh, I was asking you almost an impossible question here, but.
Can you, can you ask that again, just for, so I can?
I would like to know if there are things that we can put in motion that will, that need to be put in motion other than. The formal approval of the box schedule. In other words, can we move forward with some of the PD, with some of the teacher trainings, with some of the teacher. Uh, assignments, putting the schedule together, that kind of stuff, can we do that?
Are you asking me?
I'm, I, I'm asking, yeah, I'm asking anybody gonna answer.
I think the difficulty with moving forward, if we don't have clarity today, is a couple of things. We can't really collect. Meet with our learners, give them information about what the schedule could look like and collect course signups because it's a pretty dramatic difference. If a learner knows, I should be looking at and signing up for two science classes next year because I can take them versus one, because it's a seven period and I won't have the. Prerequisites. So we can't move forward with collecting course information from learners until we know what the schedule will look like. So that will delay us another two weeks, we've been starting that process with the learners, so that's going to be a challenge. The PD side, we can start for sure, we, as Heather said, we've already got a calendar, it's within our culture to do half-day PDs with teams. And several of them are doing that. The power standards work, for example, can definitely be done. I would hesitate starting down a road of block scheduling, specific types of PD, if that ends up potentially not being the direction we go. And I think the conversations with additional individuals who would be impacted by a potential reduction in transfer. I would not be comfortable having those conversations with more depth if the board ultimately doesn't end up going in this direction. I think that would unnecessarily um, disrupt a teacher's mental state to keep saying, well, you might be reffed and moved, or you might not, or you might be reffed and moved, or you might not. So I think there's a, a slipper of things we can probably do, but we would have to put most of what we presented on hold until we had clarity from the board.
I would, I would say this. I would, I would answer it this way. I would, I would say that we've had, since I've been, this is my seventh year. Um, there have been several uh, initiatives along with, with the school that. Have, you know, been difficult. Um, so you, you alluded to several of, of them up there. We had. Uh, I remember when we were talking about. Starting to initially talk about changing grades and the concept of some sort of Conan plan that existed at one point in time. Which I figured out at, by now, was not even a plan, it was some sort of idea that was um, put into place, but there was no. Actual planning done, there's nothing in writing, there's nothing, like, no, like, there was more of a plan. By, by a long shot, like, you know, you know, major percentages um, presented tonight. Um, than what was supposedly had, had gone on during that timeframe. So interviewing some people, finding out that. What actually occurred, I realized that in past experiences, why there was such. Anxiety about making some adjustments toward a better research-based model of doing business. Uh, we've, you know, gotten past that, which is good, and we then go into. Grading and, and so forth, you know, we've never actually rushed into the actual grading system shift. But here we are with teachers ready to and wanting to make those adjustments, which if made. Um, can improve uh, feedback loops, which feedback is a significantly important. Thing for student achievement. Um. If we, if we simplify that model and, and make it specific, and make it geared more toward what kids are learning. So, um, you know, that, that movement still needs to continue going on regardless of, of what's going, what's, uh, what's scheduled. Um, yeah, I mean, I was part of helping get rid of the modified block because of the usage of, of a hundred minutes. Period of time, you have to know, I've taught in a block before, you have to know what you're doing when you teach in a block. If you know what you're doing, teaching in a block. Your kids will. Will gain significantly more if you know what you're doing and you're committed to that, and I'm, and I, in a block. When I taught, worked with students with um, high needs, disabilities and so forth, we were able to move them significantly. So while I understand past. Practice within a district, in a district that implemented block with little to no professional development. With little note, to no vision, with no, very few goals, certainly nothing written down. This, this is a different situation. Any, any schedule that you do with those conditions of lack of professional development, lack of curriculum, lack of. Uh, you know, some, some belief that just, it's magically going to change the way. Uh, learning is on any type of, when, when that happens, you're, it's never gonna go well. And then we have. Experiences that we've heard a little bit about tonight that have truly happened and then create. A view of, well, it, it doesn't work, I don't like that. Well, yeah, done that way, it, it's, it's a bad, it's a bad avenue. We had massive controversy when we went to. When I said, alright, let's go for some, we'll start to make these schools more efficient with. One principal as opposed to two, folks, two principals wasn't working. It, I, I, we can spend hours talking about why that was the case. Um, we're getting to the point where now the, the faculty, many of the community, certainly the administration here that we have. Kind of reduced and gotten down to kind of the core. The, we're starting to see the benefits of the collaboration between the two schools would never have happened. These school, it was like these schools. Were ten miles away from one another. Um, resources weren't shared, collaboration didn't occur in that way. That's happening, and the more that that happens, the, the more success, no matter what the schedule is, is gonna take place. I think what you're, I, I do think that, um, certainly conversations of moving toward a block at some point in time. Um, were had because it does offer some benefits for the ability to get into deeper learning, more hands-on activities, more interdisciplinary learning and so forth. Just because our opportunities doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but it's certainly, it will happen if you have goals to make it happen. And for, and then you have a staff that's on board and wants to make that happen, and there's professional development that is ongoing continuously to make sure that it happens. So I have complete faith that. It can work. I, I do think that it is also simultaneously, um, it's, it's my, my job to look at not only educational. Um, improvement, which is of course what we're interested in here. That, that takes place while doing it in a fiscally responsible way. Um, we've. You know. We're in a situation here where we do have to make decisions. And if we have solutions to some difficult decisions that are gonna be made, I, I mean, I, I don't like talking numbers in front of. Of people and, because we're talking people, and we're talking an uncomfortable conversation, one that I'd rather not be having to, to have. But we're, we're forced to be in a position like this, when you have a situation where you can show data and numbers that we can. Continue to provide the programming, because I don't want to lose programming, I think that would be a huge disservice for our. Our learners here and our entire community, and it would be a backwards approach to doing things. That you can do that while addressing a, almost three hundred to three hun- three hundred to three hundred fifty thousand dollar. Um, dilemma, like part of that, that be, a big chunk, a third or more of that. Um, area that we need to go toward, I, I think you have to, I think you have to consider that. The alternative of staying in the. Um, same schedule. And trying to think about how to save that same type of money doesn't exist. Within that same schedule, just from some simple mathematics. So of looking, and, and you've done that with the, this, this is what one person would do, it is a loss of programming, you'd have to. You know, because you, you'd have to take out specific types of, like, alright, world language is going to have to be decreased, that's the avenue you have to take. Or music is not going to, based upon numbers, you can take that avenue, right? I, I know what the class sizes are in different, different grades, based upon numbers, middle school music. We'll wait till they get to high school or something to that effect, you know, that's a backwards approach to doing things, you, um, cutting the arts or doing, you know. That, those are, those are discussions that schools have across the country on a regular basis, right, for decades, years, years, over and over and over again. We're not having those conversations, we're not saying we're gonna, we're trying to figure it out by losing something, we're figuring it out by trying to make a better system. As long as the school is committed to continuous improvement, that system will get better and better regardless of the. Seven-period skinny block or, or, um, you know, a, a block, a, a four-by-four traditional block schedule. So I understand the. The hesitation, because we've dealt with it every year for the last six or seven years, but we've made progress.
And, and I want you to know too, like, I, I'm not hesitant. Obviously, it's manageable, you, while we all watch the teachers almost seamlessly be told, tomorrow you're going remote. And it happened. If you said to them, tomorrow you're doing block scheduling, they would make it happen. I have full faith in that. It's sustainability. That's the part that just makes me feel like. What do we do, like? Is it sustainable? Are we gonna next year be revisiting this and saying, sorry, guys, we're changing your schedule again?
It's a great, you know, you bring up a, a, actually, that conversation of sustainable change is, um. A, a huge issue uh, in educational research and like, that's. People make their lives just talking about that, because sustainable change is very difficult to make in education. Um, the way things are structured politically and so forth. Um, the best way to create sustainable change is to, um. Focus on, uh, this is a theory, but it, but it's supported, is to focus on. Distribution of leadership, so distributive leadership, as we empower teachers and also provide them with the support they need and they gain more. As we talked about the word efficacy, what basically, uh, belief that they're going to be able to tackle any situation. When that happens and that's a, and you come into a system like that, and, and it continues to move on, that's how sustained that change is sustained. If you don't have that, if we have low efficacy, meaning we look at a situation, we don't know if we can take, uh, if we can handle it, we'll try, we'll. Implement some stuff, I'm kind of halfway doing it. If that's the culture, if that were the culture, never should do what he's talking about. The, what I'm hearing, and, and certainly what we've shared through the education. The what I'm hearing and and certainly what we've shared through the education committee this year is that. There's an incredible amount of momentum right now. In that type of shared decision-making, shared leadership. Idea development. Focus on we can do this type of mentality. When you have that. The structure is going to work. And it can be sustainable without that. And I guarantee it had not been there. Before, there are no signs of that. We haven't been able to see that for thirty years of looking back in in history. There were no plans, no concerted efforts to do that. They've come a long way.
I would add two things I. I'm very impressed. You know, personally with seeing. The degree of preparedness on the part of this team. And it's clear that they're not taking it lightly. And it's a very professional approach, so. What what I understand is that the. Data out there shows block scheduling can work very well. But there's no guarantee that it will, it oftentimes doesn't. So if there's a team that I think. Will do it well, I think it's this team. And I'd also like to say. We we do have a finance committee meeting scheduled for this week. We had one last week too. I think we met for two and a half hours. And a lot of work has been done. Part, you know, in between those finance committee meetings, our business administrator has been very. Responsive. And we've been throwing things at the wall to see if it stick. Sometimes now you look at the numbers and. You know, you can get creative on small things, but. As Charlie's mentioned, we're talking about such large numbers here, so. Staff, you you asked a good question about admin versus. Teachers, I mean.
Well, and I don't want to put any admin or anybody. Highlight anyone because I don't want anyone to lose their job. But ultimately us as a board, we're not here to employ like to. Be hearts and minds of the teachers and admin and this. We're here to make sure that the children are getting the best education they can. While representing the taxpayer and maintaining a budget that the taxpayers willing to pay. That being said, I know that we've implemented certain things in the school. The the hall, the remote hall monitor, so the checking the in and out on the computer, great system. So does that give us room? That we don't need a hall monitor now. I'm not saying let that person go, whoever it is or. Like the. The athletic director, when I was in school, it was a teacher, it wasn't even a full-time position. I understand that the needs of. That position has gone up. Dave Springfield, I know, filled in for it for a while as a part-time role. Now it's a full-time role with an assistant. There's there's something we can look into there. I I'm just saying. There's a lot out there that we can look into. And I think that looking at the teachers and say, hey, this is where we got to cut it. That I think that's a little steep that we need, we need teachers, we need teachers, a quality teacher to teach our children. And they're not, they're not easy to come by right now. There's a teacher shortage across the United States, so. Letting them go right now is probably not the best idea. Oh, that's not my spot to say.
I I can tell you that teachers would rather be at high school teaching in a block schedule. You have the reduced amount of kids, you have the ability to do enrichment. This. Community and this staff right now, they've had those great foundations. It's amazing to come in here as a new in the district. And to see they're already doing this collaboration. In other words, you know, you're not just going out and throwing a house up. You already have a foundation. You've got the studs up and everything. I mean. For the staff to be like, okay, we can do this. We've been working together. It was amazing to see that, you know, coming into this community. So and having it in two thousand and six, we learned a lot since two thousand and six. You know, the all the things in terms of formative assessments, some of assessments, you know, looking at what do we really need, you know, it's quality rather than quantity. I I think that we've come a long way and I think every. Pretty much most schools in the state of Hampshire are also in a block schedule.
I believe that teachers can without a doubt handle it. I think it's the students. Got a sixteen-year-old boy sitting there with ADD. He's got maybe a ten-minute window where he can pay attention. Eighty-eight minutes is a long time. And I mean, ADD is a very common thing in most children right now. It's it's way the culture is going. They're constantly being engaged on their phones or whatnot, but it's capturing their attention for eighty-eight minutes. Instead of just like taking a pile of knowledge and throwing it out. I don't think they're gonna, I don't think it's beneficial for them. To just have it just jam down their throat for eighty-eight minutes.
Yes, please.
I I guess I just, and this will be my last word for unless the board compels me to say more. You know, I hear what I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying. My job is to care for this building, for this community of staff, for this community of learners. That's frankly, all I care about. Is figuring out what to do for them. And I've been up at three in the morning many nights. The reason we have this for you tonight quickly is because we've spent. Waking hours in the middle of the night, seeing our Google icons appearing on things they shouldn't be at that time of the night, trying to figure this out. So our staff and our kids won't have an impact that they did not ask for. They didn't ask for a default budget. They didn't ask to be put in a position of figuring out what they're going to do to make this work. That's my job now, and that's this board's job. And I will tell you that when you take away, I mean, we don't have hall monitors in the high school currently, but when you take away a position that supports teachers. The impact of that goes to the teacher. So when you remove a behavior support that that's able to pull a learner who needs that intervention. Or you reduce the capacity of the system to support the work they're doing in the classroom, the teachers lose out on that access to learning with their learners. And their stress level rises. I was a teacher. I will tell you the biggest thing that burns a teacher out is not feeling supported by those standing behind them. And that's what we're trying to avoid right now is is leaving the teachers with an impression or a system that's unmanageable to them. So. We didn't go to teachers first, we went there last. And I want to be clear that I don't want to lose teachers. I don't want to reduce four positions. I don't want to change the schedule. I'm not saying that I would like to do these things for the sake of me wanting to do them. I'm saying that the best solution to meeting the board's financial goals. That have been set by the default budget and our educational goals and supporting our teachers is what I put before you. If you need two more weeks to probe us with questions to get to the same conclusion, I guess that is what it is. I think we're asking you tonight to trust the work that we've done. You're paying us to do that work and we need the time with our teachers to to make it work. And if that's not something the board can agree to tonight, we'll do the best we can. But. We care about our our teachers and our kids first and foremost, and that's that's where this came from.
Did you poll the teachers and see what their recommendation is like? Did you take a survey and see how many of them were pro or against the?
Just hold the mic.
So we did not poll our teachers. We had a face-to-face meeting with them for a span of over an hour. And several stayed behind. I started with our team. Actually, I started with our association representatives. Had a discussion with them. They have their feet on the ground, their finger on the pulse of their. Membership. I met with our team leaders. We had a very robust conversation about what this could look like. They asked questions. We asked questions. It was a discussion. And then we met with our entire staff and had the same type of what I would call very intense and personal conversation with them. So. I also have every single day, open hours for my staff. I stop into classrooms. I have conversations with them. Some are are nervous. We were very transparent about that. We have had nobody say. I can't make this change. I don't want to make this change. Obviously, change is not something we would advocate willy-nilly. I don't think anybody jumped out of their skin and said, woo-hoo, a change. But they get it. They get the need for the district to look differently at at how we use resources. They get the the process that's going on here.
Okay, so our situation now is that we've had a discussion, we've had a motion, the motion has been withdrawn.
I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion. I if I can add some more discussion. We've been working on this budget since July. And I had a had had a conversation with a colleague who I was explaining our default budget and the scenarios in place. And she said, why is it that we always have to always do the teachers first? And I just looked at her in horror because we've been struggling with this budget. Painfully struggling with this budget. We met every two weeks in the summer. We met. We've we've all been attending the meetings. We've been working on this budget for months and months and months. This is the last resort. And that you were able to discover a solution to to a third of the money that we still have to find, two-thirds of it. But that you were able to find a solution. We're actually not cutting a teacher. But cutting a position where the teacher is already retiring, is that correct? We're literally not losing a teacher.
One teacher.
There's one out of the four FTEs that we could cover this model, one of them would be an existing teacher who did not have another teaching position in our school.
Yeah, I'm flabbergasted that you did that. I'm in, I'm honest to God in awe. And when I remember my time as the block schedule and you ask about the kids, okay, my sixteen-year-old son went through block scheduling for four years. With dyslexia and is now a master's level social studies teacher, making more money than me. Okay, and all of his friends, he had friends went to Stanford. They had Ivy League kids leaving here. Okay, there's, this is a quality program. If you looked at the graduation rates, you would not see much difference, okay? I believe me. We've worked on this for a long time. You guys have put the time in. We have so much more money that we have to cut. This is just the beginning of extremely hard things and I kudos to you for giving us some hope. When I went with it, I completely agree with you that much of the failure was with the admin. I I worked with them and and that was a big part of it. What we have before us is a group of people who are working at all hours together. We've built a exceptional guidance system. That we fought to have here and really has, I mean, teachers nonstop are praising the guidance system we have in place now. And that's the only way that this could work. Is if guidance was really behind it. So the fact that you four, and I know Heather Lindstad, that you're all behind making this work. Gives me, gives me. Other confidence to put the motion back to accept this proposal as is tonight.
How many teachers are lost with the the same schedule now?
I'm anticipating that I like that you asked the same number of positions either way. I don't, I don't know. That's again, that's just board's decision.
So just as a point of order, so look, Lucy, you're making. Motion.
Yes, I made the motion.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion. Oh, sorry. Okay, so. So we we we, I don't know, I don't know who knows this, but we stay, I know you guys have worked countlessly on this countless time, but. If we take the block scheduling, we lose one teacher. If we keep the regular scheduling. We lose four teachers. That's what I was looking for. Okay.
Well, that's unnecessary. True, he. He didn't answer the question. He said he might be asked to do the same thing.
The 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 budgeting process.
Go back to the slide. Well, no, I I understand that, but you you already had creative solutions for keeping personnel.
That was with under the block schedule. I would not, if I was reducing five math sections, keeping the same schedule, I would not advocate reducing that. So the the individuals who we would advocate for, if you said still four positions in the same schedule, I would present with. Through Ruben, I would present a different batch of.
I would present different potential position reductions if we did not make a schedule shift. I can't lose, you know, five math sections. I can't lose. Three social studies and three English sections. That would, those are core classes that have several graduation requirements. So if the schedule stayed the same and I was still told make four reductions, I would come back with a different batch. Which, you know, and that's that's just the reality. I this works because we have a schedule proposal that pairs with it. And honestly, when you look at at pure numbers. I would probably come back with things like the middle school music teacher, which has low signups this year, not through any fault of the program. That doesn't affect core classes. We can probably make it work with the high schools. Things like that I would likely come back with as suggestions.
I would like to see that as an alternate, so we did have some in the way, you know. So just, hey, this is the option we have.
The challenge with doing that is if I I've spoken to the individuals affected here, I would not want one of my staff members to see for the first time. Their position on the board here if I hadn't spoken with them and I'm not comfortable going to a teacher and saying, hey. We're proposing two options Monday. You might get rift based on that or you might not. Those are the types of conversations that are are timely in this situation. That typically you would want to have knowing the direction that that things were going. That's sort of what I said earlier. I wouldn't want to go forward with more in-depth conversations even with these teams. Until we have a really clear sense of where we're going.
Yeah. My concern is I believe that. In a change of this nature, the board needs to be invested in that change, so that as we move forward. They're invested and need support that. So that's why I will throw my. Motion. The other thing is, is that what we're looking at. I realized we have a timing issue. Because we have a new board tonight and we're acting on something that's as. Contentious as it is right now. But this only solves part of the problem. I think the finance committee will be looking at. Solutions that involve the elementary schools and involve. Other things as well. So. From from my perspective, I can understand where Paul's coming from. But I also understand that. Having looked at. Where we're at financially and where the opportunities are to reduce things. Some priorities have to be set. And. I hope that that's what happens. It's a finance committee meeting on Thursday. But. I mean. I I don't see any other way of. Meeting the default budget without reduce, without having staff reduction. And. I'm very supportive of the work that David and the staff have done. Thank you. Anybody else want to chime in with anything else? Hasn't been said. And we're we're ready to to vote on this motion. Okay. So Christine. Well, yeah.
Restate the motion.
The motion was made and seconded, so now it's your vote.
Yeah, can you restate?
The motion is to accept the proposed change to the Conan High School. Not schedule, it's. What would you call it? The schedule? As as proposed effective. As as you create it and now.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
But I'm staying. Well, no. And and I vote yes. The motion carries. For yes. Do no. And want to say. Okay. Item number seven, discussions. End of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Okay, so there are two. Two items here that have to do with district calendar. So I'm not necessarily asking for action on either of these right now, but just that we need to be thinking about. The these right here. That being said. It might be prudent. To act on at least one piece of the end of the school year for this year, and that would be graduation. We've already started having people asking us, when's your graduation going to be and so forth? And if it is possible for us to decide on that date, that would be helpful to this administration, the teachers, the school. And I think to people trying to. Flight for their family members coming and so forth for graduation. So the first one, this is, Nick, am I correct that the one that you have up there is this current year?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, and so the end of the year. You know, we, we need to wait a little bit longer to determine what we're have, well, it is my recommendation. That we wait a little bit longer to determine the last day of school for our, our, the bulk of our learners. We still could have snow days, you know, we have to count up a certain number of hours, a lot, lots of things can take place. So. You know, we typically have that conversation around the mid, end of April. Uh, because at that point in time, we're, we're kind of feeling like, as long as we don't have any weird catastrophes, facilities wise, we're, we're going to be in school. The, however, the senior graduation is a different situation historically. So currently, the last day, Nick, could you kind of tell us that last day the way that's? Um, I'm having a difficulty seeing it from here. I believe it was the ninth.
Tenth is graduation?
That it, oh, thank you for making that larger. Tenth, tenth is the current graduation date. It's the proposed graduation date. Uh, the sixteenth. Is the proposed last day of school. Now, this all got changed largely due to our opening of school year. Debacle that we had. So usually our last day and our graduation over the last three to four years anyway have kind of aligned very closely with one another. So some discussion around that would be helpful. As for, it's a late, it's a late hour. As for the second of the two calendars. I've, you know, met with the teachers association, I've met with CONVAL. Uh, so we don't need to bring that one up. I'm just, I want us to say it so that in case you don't want to look at it right now. You're receiving it here. We can take some feedback on it. We have some half day releases that are like the current calendar, but we're proposing one more. Uh, for next year for the elementary school. The most of this calendar for next year is very similar to what it is this year, except we have three voting days. That mess, mess up things within our district, so we can talk about that next time. Maybe there's something we can do about still having school on one of those days. I don't know. But for this, this was, would be more timely is if you're comfortable with having a conversation about. Graduation right now, that would be a helpful conversation to have.
So can you tell us where we stand relative to extra days needed for snow? And what the statute is regarding. Timing of graduation versus last day of school.
Five days is the timing of graduation that you're allowed within. So if we did it the tenth, you'd need to make sure that your last day of school didn't go. Past that seventeenth preferable.
Okay.
The. Where we are standing right now, I think we have. Oh goodness, I think it's actually one snow day, but we've had. Um, a snow day and a. Building issue day at both elementary schools. So a couple of days at the elementary schools. The required hours, because we do run by hours, is less than the elementary school than it is in the secondary. Right now, we're on track to meeting both.
So we would be able to meet sixteenth as the last day?
Sixteenth is the current last day for students.
That includes the current snow days.
That we have not factored in. If we, if you wanted to add another day for snow day, it would be the seventeenth at this point in time.
No, but I'm saying based on the hours.
Hours, oh yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're, we're still fine.
So, okay.
Currently.
So you're saying if we have another snow in a, snow day between now and then, it's going to be the seventeenth?
Well, you have, you have a lot of things, you have a couple of things to, to consider when choosing as a board, when choosing your last day. You have staff days to consider. You have student days and how you, how you work that last day's schedule. But to answer your question specifically about students' last day. Well, actually, as before you, before you go, you, I was hoping that you might. Be able to comment on your thought on this. Is that they have enough, they have enough hours. Yeah, they have enough hours to be able to.
Okay.
Meet the current situation, yes.
Okay.
Um, the.
He settled on it.
Just the gradu-, the graduation, if you have a preference.
So I think our preference would be to keep the date at the tenth if, if it's possible. I think last year we had graduation. The same week as the eighth grade celebration and the elementary schools' fifth grade celebrations, and just with graduation, there's. A baccalaureate night, which is typically the Wednesday. There's a senior awards and scholarships, which is the Thursday, and then graduation, which is Friday. So then trying to schedule in the eighth grade awards and both of the elementary schools' fifth grades, it made that week pretty hectic and unsustainable for the custodians and the teachers and families and things like that. So. Our preference would be to keep it on the tenth if possible, so we can give some clarity to families and have them start planning. I think having them in the same week is really tough.
So what do you need?
If the board could. Make a motion for the last, the, the graduation day at least, that would be helpful.
I'll make the motion. Graduation on the tenth. I second the motion.
Okay, and Christine, I saw your.
Yeah, I just have a question.
Sure.
Um, so I'd love for a graduation to be on the tenth. But if we get a big snowstorm or some weird facility problem.
It is New Hampshire.
It is New Hampshire and our buildings are old. Um, and then we have that. Clause that says that it has to be five days between graduation, last day of school, then can we make up that time? I know we've done this in the past with like. Eliminate, eliminating a. A vacation day or extending a school day.
You would have to, I'll, I'll answer it this way. So yes, you could be creative by adding time at the end of the day or whatever. We've done that before. You would need more than one snowstorm for it to matter, and if it were a mild storm, I could also do a remote day.
Yep.
We typically, if it's, we get the powder and the fluff and everything, we like to, you know, you get six inches of powder. People should go skiing, but, and take that opportunity. But if you have kind of slushy mess, let's not, let's not waste the day. Let's. Keep the learning, yeah. So, um, we have, we have ways at this point in time.
Okay.
To address that, and we don't do kindergarten and preschool remote days. They don't. Fall in the same category at all with hours. As neither are required by state law.
Okay. Very good. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Alright.
Sorry.
Oh, I didn't know you had.
I was just trying to wait a minute, I didn't catch you. Wait a second, I know it was inside of the room, but it was here.
Daisy.
Daisy.
Okay, so that passes.
Okay.
Seven zero. Okay, very good. And next we've got. Something on the. School district calendar for next year, for twenty-two, twenty-three. I don't know if this is something we need to.
I say look it over and let's come back and have a conversation with it on the next board meeting. So we're not into a rush. We're, basically the idea is that we're trying to align ourselves as much as we possibly can with CONVAL. It's not a perfect situation. Miss Phoenix in the mix as well, and that's even, that brings it even more apart, but the, the, um. Things that I would say would need to stay fairly consistent here are the February and April breaks that are on this calendar. That's, those are in line with the two other schools. And the Chris, and the holiday break in December.
Alright, good.
I'm anti-vacation, anti.
We, we could definitely.
Anything that takes you away from the academics.
Yeah.
So I know that, I know of a few districts that start closer to like August seventeenth. Why aren't we going earlier to get people out earlier? Like, why aren't we? This feels really late to me personally. I just, I'm used to.
With our HVAC, I would ask the same question. Not to worry about hot classrooms.
Are you sure that third floor is cured of being hot? Cause that second floor is hot.
It will be.
New age then.
Our, our work is going to take a year and a half, but that, there are some spots that should be in better situations by that point in time.
Alright, back to the schedule. I would like to go, I would like to start at school early. I'd like to start it on the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think what we might do in consideration of the hour is to look at this and bring it back for next meeting. Would that be okay?
Keep going on, John, come on.
Lisa.
We, we do have to discuss something about the JRMSCHS heat back project. Ruben, do you want to?
Yeah, um. So we're still in the process of. Getting that contract signed in that we haven't been satisfied with the detail in the contract. That contract, Carrie is talking with an attorney tomorrow just to make sure that, uh, we're going to look to put some language in. To make it kind of contingent so that we can get the contract. And some. Documents that the board would need to sign the board resolution to the leasing company. It's important that we get this, this information to the leasing company prior to April first. Because once that happened, the rates change. And so it really needs to happen sooner than even that, so that we have some time for them to kind of look over things. So, um, the company EEI, the reason why they don't have everything to the way we would like it to in the business office. Is because they're still waiting for the official like mechanical plans. So they bid based on square footage and, um, general costs and the fact that they do these all over the place. They know what the, the costs are, but we need more specifics. And so we're just working on that language right now. What? I would like, if possible, is for the board to allow the, uh, give the permission to the board chair. To. Sign on behalf of the board, the board resolution. If we are not, if we're able to get it all situated prior to the next board meeting. So that we can get this lease work moving. Now, I will say that, that I believe that is, that is legal. Um, I also have a, I'm waiting for a legal opinion on that one, but I figured it's better to have the motion then passed. And if it find out that that's not the way to go and we have to wait for the next board meeting or whatever, or have an emergency board meeting, then we can do that.
It's already been approved by Warren article. So that all we need to do is authorize a signer, authorize a signer.
Yeah, you just have to authorize a signer of, you've already authorized me to sign the contract and to enter into a lease agreement. But in order to enter into a lease agreement, we have to have this board resolution signed. And so you need, that's what I'm asking.
Everything's already a go, you just need a signature.
What, what does the resolution say?
The, it's not attached, is it? It's a board resolution that. Do we have Carrie on the call still or no?
She was on the check list.
She's gone to bed.
She might, she may have. It's a document that's necessary for the leasing company. Yeah, if she could, we could wire her in, that would be great.
In the meantime, I'll make a motion to authorize John to sign the resolution for the school board.
In a second. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
So the board resolution is a couple of pages long. I, I don't know that you want me to read all of it, but it, um. It's basically authorizing the execution and delivery of a master equipment lease purchase agreement. With respect to acquisition, purchase, financing, leasing of the HVAC equipment and everything else that goes along. With that work for the capital items for public benefit and it authorizes the execution and delivery of the documents. Required in connection with all of this. And any other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution. So that's the first paragraph and. I paraphrase some of it. And then it goes on to talk about. The school board being a political body. And it gives the dollar amount of the lease that was approved by the voters in the Warren article. And then it further talks about the master lease purchase agreement, the financing documents. So those would all be included as part of the review in this resolution so that everything was a package.
It's a document that's needed for, to enter into the lease agreement. Is that? A good summary?
Yes.
And. Should John not be allowed to be the single signer? Rather than an emergency board meeting, could we have like? Board come in and sign this within these two day, this two day period? Is that possible? Rather than a formal meeting, can we just come in and, if, if it needs all of our signatures, can we just do it that way?
There's only one signature. Doesn't prohibit any other risks because we're all saying yes. Might, or, or no.
Yeah, but. We want us all.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
So, uh, any discussion? Then all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries, seven zero. Committee assignments. We have, uh. Gone over briefly what the committees are. You can take some time to look at them and, you know, ask yourself what you might be interested in. There are five standing committees, facilities, policy, finance, education, and the goals committee. And then there are several other committees that are not board committees, but that are still populated by board members as well as staff members.
We should pick two, three?
Two, two would be great. Where, wherever you have an interest.
When do I pick? Like, great. I know what I want to do.
Well, yeah, there is a facilities meeting this weekend.
Finance, finance.
Finance, a finance meeting if you're interested in that. Okay.
Finance is one to three on Thursday. Meets in. What's that?
One thirty.
Oh.
No, one, one, one o'clock. I, I asked that we move it to one because I'm only available. And we, Carrie has a meeting at one, so, okay.
Yeah.
One o'clock.
Okay. And that's in my office, but unless we have a large number, when, which will move it to another conference room. Alright.
Okay, so we will send out the list of commitments and. Perfect.
I'll send you the working document.
Thank you.
Will there be a little explanation of what these are? Can you do that so that I know what I'm signing up for? Education one looks great, but I don't know.
And when they currently meet would be great.
Yeah.
That was, when they currently meet would be great.
Oh, yeah.
That controls when I could go.
Just a thought, John. Last year, when we went through the same process, one thing that we did that I personally think was helpful, because I helped with it, was we created a Google form. For each board member was able to indicate from, you know, top to bottom what their preferences were. And then I worked with Marcia to make sure that we had it, because you can't have more than three. Um, school board members on a committee, so if everybody wants to be on finance, we're going to have to tell a few people that they can't be on finance. So just to make sure that we're not having, you know, seven people show up for one committee and only one person show up for other. I don't know if you'd want me to do what I did last year, send out a form and then you as the chair could work through those, you know, assignments.
Yes, Nick, that would be great.
And then in that email, and I think I did this last year, I can put information. And they got a sentence or two that said what each committee did and is responsible for, and obviously I can help answer questions for new board members on that.
Now, are the schedules on those?
I was just going to say, could we include the schedule?
Nick, we'll work on, knowing what, what these are, we'll work on creating an annualized.
So I, I've, I've tried a few times to work with previous iterations of the board to get a solid schedule for committees. Because, um, just as a reminder, technically these committees need to function in the same way that the board does. They need to be transparent, open meetings with agendas, minutes, et cetera. Um, again, you can only have three people, because if not, you're getting a board quorum, which effect, uh, essentially makes it a school board meeting. Any school board member can show up to any meeting. It's just that if you show up to one of these meetings and you're not on the committee. You're essentially just a member of the public, so you wouldn't have the ability to actively participate. You would only have the ability to show up, and then if there was some sort of comment section, make a comment as a member of the public. So we just have to be careful. About how many people are on any given committee to make sure that we're not. about how many people are on any given committee to make sure that we're not creating school board meetings and then not properly noticing them to the public.
My, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, but in these committee meetings, our only legal obligation is to post the um, dates, times, locations.
Date, time and location, it has to be done within twenty-four hours excluding, you know, within business days. I think technically just Sundays and holidays, but I can get all that language. I have it somewhere.
You had a committee calendar.
So the, the idea would be to say, okay, this committee meets once a month. They meet the third Thursday of the month at seven thirty in this room. We've done that the past couple of years, but the committees haven't necessarily held on to that schedule. So we posted it and there's been some deviation. So my recommendation would ultimately be to have in that first meeting, have each committee discuss what they want their frequency, time and location to be, and then we could set a formal schedule. And then that would technically meet our requirement, and then we would just need to generate that.
Okay, thank you, Nick. So yes, if you would send out that poll again, that would be great. And any description of the committee, the, uh, committee's work.
And I guess the one other note to make, I know that traditionally speaking, when it comes to manifest, that's usually a one-year position. I know in past years people have asked whether or not the people currently serving on manifest want to keep on that or not. So I don't know if that's something we want to discuss quickly tonight, or if we want to just work that into the the Google form.
Sure, why don't you include that, that makes.
Can it have like information on it too?
Yeah, I can, I can put, I can have a description of pretty much everything here but construction trades, but I can talk to John as in terms of what the commitments are to that.
And, and if anybody looking at this, whether a new board member or someone who's been here and has not served on committee, feel free to contact me and either I'll answer you or I'll direct you to the chair of the committee for more information.
And I don't know if it's still, I remember Marcia said, uh, that board members are expected to be on three. That's, that was what I remember telling us last year. I don't know if that's still the case or not, but. I know, it's a lot.
I think we've been on, I think we've mostly been on two committees.
You have twenty-two slots for seven people, so you have three people that would do three things and one person that would do four. Obviously, people can do more or less based on that, but you have twenty. Based on how you guys are currently operating, you have three people on most committees. And then, uh, uh, the what's up on right, what's up there right now is how many people are traditionally serving on each. And this keeps all incumbent members in and then just points out vacancies due to new board members, so. It, it would be about three per person.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, everybody serves on the school board as a volunteer. You do what you can do and try and fit things to, you know, your, your other life, uh, needs and expectations.
I think explanations and times will help.
Yeah, just expect a big, long email tomorrow or perhaps Wednesday morning with.
We're gonna feel very ill against you.
Alright, um. Public comments too.
Alright, that's me again. Nicholas Handy, Communications Coordinator, School Board Secretary. We still do have some people online and in person. Again, the process for, uh, making a public comment is to either raise your hand in person or remotely. If you want to do it remotely, it's at the bottom of whatever screen it is that you're on. I'll be able to acknowledge you from there. I'll put the, uh, policy up real quick. Read the policy, first name, last name, town of residence.
I was, I thought I was on the agenda early on, but maybe it just got kinda fucked over. I'm the new president of the moment at Little League Baseball Organization, uh, which encompasses six towns in the surrounding community. And, um, I went to Kelly Marquardt, which is the RMS principal to discuss field renovations over at RMS School. Uh, there's a field out there that we've been fortunate enough to use for the last four or five years, I believe, and I believe that I presented to the board four or five years ago, um, because at that time we needed to do some work to it also, and we did. Um, and so, so it's been presented to me, um, from families and other, um, outfits, landscaping outfits, if you will, in town, um, that they've been able, they wanna donate materials, time, labor, all that good stuff to make improvements to that field over there. Which our league uses, uh, on a daily basis. And so I spoke at Kelly. I also spoke with the facilities, um, and they suggested that I had to bring it to the school board. Um, so I don't know if there's any questions, um, or what that looks like. I just wanted to be here for questions if there were any. Um, one request that I would ask is that, uh, our field cleanup is scheduled for Saturday, April second. So if it's possible to, um, see if that's, um, if we can get the material, I mean, the material is, is available, um, and I don't know if it's something that we can dump and store at the, at RMS School. Uh, I did look at some locations with, um, with Kelly, um, and I sent some pictures. And so I don't know if you guys got the pictures or not, but, um, there was a couple of areas, uh, in the like, on the side of the parking lot that was kinda out of the direction of the kids that would be out at recess and such, and parking spots and all that. Uh, I mean, we're only like a, a week away, I mean, a week and a half away, um, but. Uh, I don't know, I guess that's just the quick spiel on it.
I want to thank you very much. Sorry that we didn't realize that you were here waiting. Donation was accepted as a part of our consent agenda. Would have made a, probably should have made more of a note of that. But we're very grateful for what you've done. And both in the past and, and right now. Thank you.
So is it something that we'd be able to, like, if we, if we have, uh, availability of the material, is it something we can dump over there?
My suggestion is that he worked with John LeClair. Um, because, uh, I had a question around drainage. If we're gonna build mounds and so forth, I wanna know where it's gonna drain and is that draining shoesable for?
Yeah, initially the thought was just to drain it off into the wooded area. I don't know if you're familiar with the field over there or not, but drain it off into the wooded area, off to like the third base side. Um, that was just the initial thought. We didn't like put any like deep, deep thought into it or anything, but.
Yeah, I don't know what, what lands requirements are and all that stuff, so I like.
I mean, it's more for, it's more not drainage in particular, like, not like a drain or anything, just runoff, like, we're just gonna
Exactly.
Almost slope it a little bit and like roll it.
So John LeClair will take care of all that stuff.
Okay, alright, so we're with John.
We'll put you in touch with John.
Okay. It was interesting to say, say here and get into the whole thing. Pretty unique, but, um, yeah, so.
Tell your friends, have them all come.
Well, I mean, I guess if I, if I got time, I, I got questions as far as like, you know, I mean, that all, you know, that was a great presentation. It got passed and whatnot. Um, but I mean, you know, you alluded to the point of inflation, you know, another five hundred thousand on top of that nine hundred thousand. That's one point four million and this proposal is only cutting three hundred and twenty thousand. Which I still don't understand, I haven't wrapped in my mat, my mind around the math, because you're only cutting one, one personnel. But you're saving three hundred and twenty thousand by proposing this. And that's only a fifth of what the expense is actually gonna be.
Budget and personnel different, okay? We cut eight, because, uh, we cut four positions. And at eighty thousand dollars a position, that's three hundred and twenty thousand, okay?
Which is.
It's, it's like ha- having someone retire and not hire someone to replace them. That's kinda what it's like. So we lost four positions, but we lost only one person.
Okay, but then.
But on the numbers piece, the, the budget cut, because of the default budget is, uh, five five hundred and forty thousand. And the rest, the inflation part of it brings it up to about nine.
That was including inflation. I got you.
So it's it's a little bit, it's a little bit more than the third, so it's good start.
Yeah, and I, I just wish that, you know, it had to, again, hindsight's twenty-twenty, but, you know, wish you could have looked at other areas. I think that what he was alluding to is like, looking at other areas to cut that cost, you know, instead of the teachers, instead of the faculty, instead of stuff like that. You know, um, because again, it's gonna ha- it's gonna be a trickle at all the levels. Now, all the elementary schools, you're gonna lose teachers, you're gonna lose all that, you know, um, because there's really no other way to cut costs, you know? My only other thought was on that, on the food thing, it's one of ninety thousand, right? Something to that effect. I mean, is there other alternative organizations, outfits that, you know, do the food for district?
Where, you, you have, I mean, these are great. This is a great question, um. We are definitely in the process of looking at a, a lot of, uh, different type of alternatives. Uh, what, like maybe even bringing it in-house. Um, now, that's a huge undertaking, so doing it for the fall is almost, it's, it's unlikely. Although, we're getting some meetings set up. And then we're going to, um, we've met with the wellness committee, uh, or members of that melt wellness committee, and, uh, we're gonna put a survey together and start to find people who are interested in this topic, um, to, to brainstorm more as to what we can be doing. Uh, we, it's a little late to go out to bid for this. We have to go out to bid next year for this, um, so we're kind of um, it's a cost of doing business, I guess you could say, at this point in time. Uh, it's, uh, and it's possible that with the, uh, right now, the federal government is not likely to give us the free meals that they are right now. That's going away. If that takes place, there are circumstances that could cause us to spend less possibly and not necessarily have to utilize all that ninety. There are just a lot of a lot of different things to think about, but you, you're on the right track. We immediately have started to look at different alternatives.
No, good luck. I, I hope it works out. I mean, I know, you know, having family and been around the area for forty years, the block scheduling didn't work last time, like, and now I don't know. I don't know how it's gonna, but, I mean, good luck. I hope it works. I mean, it was a great presentation, and I mean, I think that they got good ideas and everything, but I think I'd just probably keep my other comments, yeah.
Alright. And I'm not noticing any other, uh, public comments online.
No? Okay, very good.
Does this, is this how long it always goes?
No, this is fairly unusual.
Don't worry, the next one will be just slightly a bit.
I will stop asking questions, I promise. Please don't. This is just our hazing for new members. We jumped in on a big spot, like I did.
Board matters, uh, future items, anybody have anything?
I have board matter.
Yes.
I'd like to ask the board to ask the communication committee to, uh, look at ways that we can make easier access to the public, um, information and instructional materials that we have available. In other words, look at index and search index that gets to the public to instructional materials that are readily available. For example, if I go in and, and search on book, I don't find a library. I know that the library books are available online. You can find out what books are kept in our libraries. Uh, I know that if I click on curriculum and instruction, I don't get the program of studies anyplace. So I, I, I think that our communications, uh, committee can, should be able to look at how we can either create an index or create a search or something that allows the public to get to access to access easily the stuff that's all readily, readily available now.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of people ask about that.
And along, along those lines, um, I'd like to give a heads up to a policy committee. HB fourteen thirty-one, the Parents' Right Bill passed the House on a straight party line vote. And it goes to the Senate, uh, Committee of Conference. And, uh, the Senate right now is fourteen ten Republican, which are the ones who passed it in the House. So, um, if that bill passes, we're gonna have to have policies that make that information available. So if we get started now, uh, I think it would be very, very helpful.
Make what information there? Oh, what you were just already asking for?
Instructional materials, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we have a wealth of information on the website. Uh, sometimes it's difficult to find and, uh, anyway.
Thank you, Charlie. And thank you for the heads up on that bill as well.
Um, there's another bill HB six fourteen that I wanted to bring up, just as, um, I've been really trying to pursue any ways of getting funding outside of our district. Um, and there was a very informative legislative session talking about what um, the state's planning to do to revamp their, um, statewide aid system. They have two hundred million dollars in, uh, in aid waiting. People, people have applied to their wonderful systems and they have two hundred million dollars waiting. And the applications are just dying out. They're just aging out because the state doesn't have the money. They're not able to do it. So what they decided to do is take the three point three million that they kind of have left and use that to create a committee that will go to each of the four hundred sixty plus schools and discern what's the highest need, where are the priorities? And then create a new aid application with that information. And that looks like it went through one. It looks like it's pushing through. Everybody loves it. Great, let's use this money and, and actually have some oversight. But that would be people from the state actually coming in and looking at our master plan and looking at our stuff and saying, here's where we need the aid. So it's just something coming down the pipe that, again, we want we wanna have our paperwork in place. We wanna have our priorities, you know, ready to go and say, yep, we need A, B and C. You know, and, and the application can go right through. So they're not promising money. They're just saying they want better oversight. The system that they had in the last ten years failed dismally. And let's try this again. So that's in the works.
Okay, well, thank you. What, what was the number of that?
I think it's six fourteen, HB six fourteen, I believe. I might have the four and the one displaced, but.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, if there are no more board matters or future items, then we could use a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
Second.
I third.